Hi, welcome. It's, oh gosh, what day is it? Good Lord.
Seventeenth.
Thank you. September seventeenth, the planning board. And we're going to open with a small discussion on a hearing that we had a couple of weeks ago. It's a stone wall repair at 120 Pond Street. And at 7:45, we'll have our first public hearing, continued public hearing for 90 Hayden Rose Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business tonight is a compliance review of 120 Pond Street. Mr. Vincent Duramo, I might be saying it wrong, I'm not sure if he's here or not.
No, so we were just going to have the board-
Just discuss here?
Kind of discuss if he should come back.
Alright, perfect. So, board members, back on June 11th, we actually approved the stone wall repair. If you remember, there was a stone wall that was damaged due to an auto hitting the wall. The applicant at that time came in, spoke about how he was going to make the repairs. And the crux of it is that we wanted those repairs to the stone wall to be consistent with the existing stone wall that was in place, that's been in place for a long time. It's come to the attention of the board that the subsequent repairs are not quite consistent, at least the way that I looked at some of the pictures and I looked at the past notes, to what I think the original intent of the board was. So I'd ask you maybe if you have looked at the pictures or could go to the pictures. I think that's page 13. You can see a series of three or four pictures where the repairs seem to be inconsistent or incongruent with the existing stone wall. I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and discuss what potential actions that we should take to bring the applicant back in and/or to modify the repairs that he has made in such a way that it is more consistent with the existing stone wall. So I'll pause there. You know, entertain any questions or if members of the board have comment. It's kind of an open discussion for the next 10 or 15 minutes or so to figure out how we want to proceed. So, Amy?
I just have to ask a clarifying question for the public's benefit. So what is the process when after we approve scenic road, stone wall removal and replacements? What is the procedure after that? Does the town inspector come and look at the work when it's done?
That's a good question. I don't know, and Georgia, you might have some insight. I don't know if he goes out to every project upon completion or if it's only warranted or generated if an individual has a complaint or raises the issue back with the town or back with the board that the work that's being done is not in line with what was actually approved by the board.
I would agree on the latter. So even in the bylaw and just the general process in the past, there's no kind of follow-up as-built inspection. So once the permit is issued, the applicant takes them, they're free to do the work as it's approved. But like you had suggested, if there's air issues, that's when staff will go out. So there's really no monitoring process after that.
You know-
One of the things we probably want to talk about is how we maybe build some specificity into our decisions. Because we had a pretty rich conversation with this applicant and we had a pretty, I think we all had a, I thought we had a pretty solid idea of what the plan was. We even asked the question about how, or somebody did, I think you did Gary, how to marry the old stone wall with the new one. So we probably need to develop a process, I think, more than there is one existing that we've relied on.
Yeah. Or even, just to piggyback on the chairperson's comment, Madam Chairwoman's comment, around criteria, right? So I think we had a vision of a stone wall that is consistent with the existing stone wall. But my vision or our vision of what that looked like may not be consistent with what the applicant. And clearly, look at some of the pictures, he's kind of taken it in a little bit different direction. So maybe if there's things like this, that we create a set of criteria where there's ambiguity, it may minimize or reduce, you know, things like this that come in front of the board.
So just my thought on this. And I'm wondering if it's worth kind of separating this into two different issues. One being this specific incident. And then two being moving forward, what else can we do to ensure some compliance for these scenic walls? You know, I've driven by it, I've been by it a few times, and I also remember that conversation. And, you know, I guess I struggle in a couple of ways. One, making comments to maintaining the rural feel of it. If you look at it as now, it definitely does not have that rural feel. And two, and I'm not a stone expert, but it doesn't look like it's all original stone. And he specifically said they were only going to reuse the existing stone. So to me, there's potentially two pretty clear differences between what they had proposed and committed to do versus what's actually being done. That's just my take on it. I don't know what our options are here with this specific incident. It feels like it's probably, I mean, I don't know if we can have them come back in for a conversation. I don't, I'm not really sure. But I feel like we owe it to talk to them.
Pass them one of those, the iPads. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, I apologize. Can somebody pass an iPad down?
Just a quick note, I think it's important to call out what we're talking about. We're talking around it, but we haven't talked about the specifics. Are we talking about the lower level with the bright gray stones? Is that, how many different sections are we talking about?
No. Yeah.
What was approved was, we had approved a structure, well, I'm going to use these definitions because I think as far as describing what we have and where we want it to be, so there's something called an engineered stone. And so we did talk, an engineered stone is what's, can we flip that as I'm talking? I'm on page 12. Can we flip the screen? Yes, right there. Yep. Back one. Yep. That's what's called an engineered stone. And I'm sure that that gray-
At the bottom, right?
At the bottom.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Is going to be covered with soil.
Right.
So I found nothing wrong with that of our conversation.
And that's on his property.
And that's on his property. And we talked about how that was okay. Whereas the problem is the next one is-
The one you were on.
The one we were on, yeah.
That's one, that one.
Yes.
And then if you flip to, where is it?
Before you flip, can we just talk? To it specifically, I mean, that does not look bad to me. Am I missing something?
It looks nice.
But it's engineered, it's not rural. So if we flip to then-
Can I speak to that as well, just briefly?
Sure.
And I see a difference in color. I see some red stones in there that are not visible on the previous picture of the, you know, stones that were there before they started rebuilding. So that's part of it as well. And part of it is just that it looks super square and very, you know-
So I guess my question is if we flip to 14, which is-
I'm not pointing at the number.
It's not the same number. The one with three, yeah. That's the one we spoke in great length about that's not completed yet. So I also had a question. So who, when were these pictures taken and was there an action given? Because depending on the number of days between our discussion and the wall, was there a halt put on this?
So to my knowledge, there's been no halt put on it. When these pictures were taken-
I took these last week, probably last Thursday.
But this picture wasn't last week. This picture was originally-
No, these pictures were submitted with the application.
Oh.
These were the application photos.
So how far have they gotten?
The nail phone.
I'm trying to decide, I guess I need to-
So-
That one?
That's one.
That's new. And then the one before that is new.
And the one before?
Yep.
So I just, so both sides have been brought out flush?
My sense is that it's all, it's done.
It's done, okay.
It's not done yet.
Well, is it pretty close to done? I didn't drive by, but Georgia did.
There are still people out there working, but looking, it looks like they have the top layer complete. So I can't imagine how much is left to do. And that's amazing, I don't know, but it seems very complete.
Yeah. Very different.
So I think the discussion, I think there's two parts to it. One is this particular incident, is there any remediation? Or do we want to kind of bring the applicant back for some type of remediation? I think the other part to Gary's point is identifying and maybe putting together some type of compliance criteria. So when these type of scenarios come before the board, it's not just, hey, yeah, we'll keep with the spirit and the intent of what the original was, but it's, no, you'll adhere to these particular criteria so that we have a level of confidence that what's actually being constructed or reconstructed is truly not only in line with the intent, but in line with the criteria and guidelines that we put forth. So Georgia, I'm not sure if, you know, if we bring the applicant back in, what are we going to do, make him tear it down and reconstruct it? I guess-
Yeah, it's a matter of, I mean, a matter of meeting of the minds and what corrective action the board could recommend. I mean, it's really up to the board.
I'd like to have them come back in and explain the differences between them, and I'd like to hear from them. And David, just going back to your point, it's not that it's necessarily ugly, it's that it's not what they said they were going to do.
Right, right.
So to me, there's a principle here, but I'd like to bring them in and have them explain and say, look, this is what you explained to us, and this is what it is now. Please help us understand the differences here.
And why.
And then, and why, and then we go from there.
Man, I don't have any issue or concern with bringing the applicant back in. Amy?
I think it's okay to bring them back, especially, I think they need to tell their story. I drove by it also, and I couldn't tell for sure that they were not all old stones, just put together really neat. There's no mortar in there or anything. Stone just put together, you know, really hurtful.
Really hurtful presentation, yeah.
Fair.
Yeah.
Because the original stone walls, you know, were stuck together all neat and tight, and then they just eventually over time fell down. So it's hard to reproduce the falling apart look.
Yeah, I beg to differ on that. I'm doing quite a bit of stone work myself, well, not my personal self, but on a property. And you have to buy specialty stone in order to get that kind of flat finish. Well, if you buy them, you know, in those large pallets and, you know, by the yard, I mean, that's probably pretty expensive stone. So it's not that he hasn't, you know, put out the effort to do a quality project. I think that's would be, you know, where we would have, what we would have to decide what the repercussions were. And I'm not sure what's open to us.
Right.
Frank? I mean, historically, you were asked a question similar to this. There was a neighbor that had a fence, a rock wall that was very well maintained and structured in order. And someone asked, well, how do we make ours look like that? And there really is no answer according to the bylaw. I kind of side with David's view where it looks like they're going along with the spirit of what our intentions were. But to answer, I think, the question that's being asked, how far astray are they? And when they're done, we can compare the plans they put in to us, ask permission for the scenic roadway changes. And if they're that far afield, then they would be in line for a fine or remediation of some sort. But just from this view, I think we'd have to maybe go there in person if we're going to talk fines and actually look. I don't think they're that far afield from what I remember them asking. And I'm pretty strict about these things, so.
So I guess wait and see.
The one comment I would make is, I'm okay with bringing back in and getting some answers, but does it warrant a site walk for us? We do our homework and either individually or as a group get there and, you know, if we're going to go to the trouble of bringing him in, I think we should have our plan together.
So I don't disagree with that. I think it's probably, I'm not sure, a group meeting, but have individually go by, go out, take a look at it would probably be warranted. And I know I'm up against it timewise.
Yes, we are kind of up against it. But we have a little bit of flexibility in the agenda later, we have a continuation. So we can come back to it.
I also might contribute that it might be good to have an expert. There are some people, I mean, either on a site walk or the day that we invite them back, so that we can talk to the fact of how we can better describe in the future these types of projects.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Did you have something, Carol? Because I, we want to hear from you.
No, I'm just reading the, in reading the minutes from the meeting, it was very, very clear to me that it wanted to be a stone wall that exists on the road. And looking at the pictures, and I will drive by and look at it in person, but looking at the pictures, it looks like the wall is made entirely of new stone and all of the old stone is just laying in front. So I will, I will make a point to go by and look at it in person.
Yeah, we will move on because we have the first public hearing. But I did, I did drive by as well. And I think one of the things I want to make sure I say so I don't forget it is that we could, he's a professional stone mason who came in lots of times. We deal with the homeowner, and we might just be forewarned to ask for some representations, picture representations, so we know that we're talking about the same thing when we're talking about it with-
Just one quick question. Is this town property or their property?
The-
The wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on their property.
I think it's on private property.
Then why would they need a scenic road for them?
Well, the gate part, right?
Gate part is-
Yeah, so yeah, that's pretty major part is on private property, I actually have to show them.
We specifically talked about the transition from the very-
We did.
Yeah, in the notes too.
You know, straight edged wall to transitioning into a more of a traditional farm wall. And he said, oh yes, we'll blend it in very smoothly.
We'll make it work, I think the work was-
Reality is, the new wall looks exactly like the part that was already built there.
The manicured wall, yes. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing, the continued public hearing for 90 Hayden Rose Street, site plan review for the proposed school bus parking lot. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? And just as a reminder, people, everybody here is welcome to ask questions, but Carol, Gary, and Frank are not eligible to vote. Okay. Please come forward.
Sorry, Mary, should we, can we sit or should we go?
You can stay. Yeah, you can stay. But, yeah.
I don't think technically I can, because I'm technically in a butter.
Oh, are you in a butter as well? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Then yes, thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Yep, nope, I appreciate that, keeping me, keeping us honest here. And then Frank, just, you didn't, you missed a meeting.
I missed a meeting.
Yeah.
I had to leave early.
Yeah.
But I've been a proponent of this since 2008. Carol and I are on a green committee and so.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, audience at home and the audience here, and then take us away.
Susan Rothermick, I'm the Director of Finance for the School Department.
Phil Morris from Rural Tech Engineering, representing the School Department.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm busy getting to the page where our agenda is, but if you want to take us through any changes, I know that we were sort of racing to get it done this year and then it changed. So.
Georgia, would you mind going to the site plan one more? That's good. Okay, so since the last meeting, the three main issues, I guess, were the lighting, the landscaping, and the biggest issue was the stormwater management. As you recall, one of the biggest concerns from the Conservation Commission was the deep rate control runoff coming off the site. Maybe where that last Monday night Conservation Commission approved revised changes to the stormwater. And the way we were able to meet the stormwater standards was we were able to make that detention basin on the south side of the property a little bit bigger. And in order to do that, we had to shorten the length of the parking lot. So what we ended up doing is reducing the pervious area, making the detention area bigger, allowing for some detention of the stormwater prior to discharge. So basically, that resulted in a loss of three bus spaces. Originally, we were proposing 33 bus spaces and 35 parking spaces for bus drivers. We've got that down to 30 buses and retained the 35 parking spaces, which still allows some growth from what the School Department currently needs. The second thing, we completely recreated the parking lot. There was concern about the slopes, minimum slopes in the parking lot. We were trying to minimize the slope to keep the elevation change down and limit the amount of fill we're putting on the site. We now have a minimum 1% everywhere throughout the parking lot, which again causes us to raise the edges of the existing field a little bit. Probably, originally, we were hoping to fill around 18 inches, now we're probably around two feet, two and a half feet to achieve that grading. The second thing was the lighting. There was a question, we're going to go with 15-foot-high light poles, and at the time, we're trying to maximize the parking spaces and what have you. The proposed plan does propose now 15-foot light fixtures, LED light fixtures, cut-off, Doc Scott compliant. Be able to add some around the perimeter and one in the island adjacent to the access road to better distribute the light levels throughout the parking lot. We had, as you recall, there was one spot that was kind of a darker area.
Mm-hmm.
Here we put something to comment, and we've now addressed that. The third largest change is at one point, we were, since we were trying to get this done this season, due to budget constraints, we're not proposing any landscape improvements at the time. We've not put trees in that island between the parking lot and the access road to the school. We're proposing, that plan had, I believe it was five red maples and landis. I believe the last comment we received from the hearing group consultant is we definitely go with all red maples, 30-foot on center. We made that change. The comment was to maybe have that be a condition of the approval. And I just sent them to Georgia today.
Yeah, every member should have a copy.
So that's the only change on this new plan that came today was the change for the landscaping to comply with the recommended condition, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Everything else, circulation patterns, traffic patterns, the drainage concept as far as catching the stormwater catch bases, bring it to a stormwater quality unit prior to discharge and the detention basin, all that has remained unchanged since the last settlement.
What is the schedule now? I'm sorry. When do you hope to do this work?
We're hoping to do it, well, as soon as school gets out next year. So we're looking to bid this winter, hopefully October, November timeframe. We bid it at a tough time of the year. We bid it in the summer when contractors pretty much already have their work. So we're hoping in winter, when they're trying to fill up the coffers for next spring, we might get better pricing.
Okay, because that was part of the issue too with some of the landscaping and things like that, is that you were over budget and you couldn't, you were very tight on money.
Correct.
So it's, you're going to rebid it entirely?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Phil, do you want to come up and do you have any kind of, let me put a, make space. We should throw a third chair there. Sorry, Carol.
Just for the record, Phil Paradas with Beta Group. We are working on behalf of the town to protect the interests. And before I start, I just want to say a thank you for extending our contract another year. Appreciate the confidence in us and the work hard you've done on that. So thank you very much. So generally, the, what was discussed was what we saw in terms of the changes. The big concern was obviously the increased rate of runoff from the new parking lot. But they've modified it and re-engineered it, and it currently meets the standards of all the, all the tent standards for stormwater management. And we did want to make that, Jill, who's not here, made the recommendation to change the trees, because some of them are very large and the spacing would not have been amenable to. So with that-
So yeah, that was, those are the only open issues and they're resolved.
Yep.
Perfect, perfect. Any questions? Yeah, Amy?
I just wanted to clarify, I think this was said last time. So you reduced it to 30 buses, and how many buses do we have now?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, so you have room for two more. So I understand that you have to do it that way, you don't have that much space, but I'm concerned that that might be too small for the future. But there might be other places on site, maybe in the future.
I was just, to piggyback on that question, is there kind of a backup plan or a secondary location? Let's say you go above the 30 number, could those buses then find a home somewhere else on the Loop Road?
So I would say the short-term answer to that would be if the buses continue to grow, we would actually relocate the bus driver cars. And then we could get the buses around the perimeter.
For the, for the record, 10 years ago, there was only 25 buses, and then we moved to 26. So it, I think that's the pace, maybe one bus every three, four years right now anyways.
Growth, growth, growth. Did you have to add buses this year?
We added a bus from last year to this year.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Dan?
So I was just wondering, one of the things I've been uneasy with is the amount of diesel fumes that are going to be coming off the buses and into the parking area. And I was wondering, has there been any thought to electric buses and to the future of that potential? And is there a possibility of providing conduit, at least empty conduit, for the ECO units that can be placed? We've required several gas stations in our town already to have them. I'm just wondering if these connections would be some foresight and a good thing for progress.
Some of the environment, or the alternative fuels for the buses, the electric, propane is actually one of the higher ones in terms of alternative. So diesel is the most popular right now. Propane is the next of choice for an alternative fuel with electric actually being last still. So from a bus alternative fuel option, electric's not quite there yet, although the bus companies are making great strides in looking in that direction. One of the things that states are looking to is the whole Volkswagen debacle, is states got money in terms of that emission issue that they had. So some states are making plays for alternative fuel for fleets within, within the state. So we're, we're on the edge, but we're not there yet. And the buses are bought by the bus company. So this contract has a potential for five years. It's something we could discuss with the bus company in the next five years to explore some alternative fuel options.
Would it be proactive to provide conduits or that would, could accommodate for that in the future so that at least they're dead-ended and in the pavement? Because I, after reading a lot, I spent some time thinking about how it was going to become easy with the diesel fumes that we're going to be putting off in our public spaces. And I thought, well, maybe that's a justification for it, that if we see that, you know, in the next five, 10 years, the cost of buses, of these types of buses have done, has, have been reduced by half in the last few years. And I imagine, and in California, they're buying them quite a bit now. And I imagine that's going to be where the direction we're going to be going. Is there any openings, any spaces in the pavement? And would those connections be available to connect to presently?
We haven't even, we haven't even put that, anything with it.
How much time would, would that, would that be possible? And how much time would that, would that kind of investment be?
I actually don't, I, I'm not sure.
If I may ask some context along the lines of her questions. The predecessor CFO of the school was very much interested in alternative fuel buses and something that I think you're referencing. But currently, the buses travel from Ashland, all 28 buses now are traveling eight miles extra twice a day, four times a day. So twice in the morning, twice in the afternoon. And so multiply that by how much less diesel fuel we'll be using and paying for and consuming, it's a, it's a plus on the, on the green side of things, even though it's still diesel fuel. It's a step forward at least for the next five years.
But I think we could be touted as proactive. Could we provide that now? I mean, I think it's a thought that is worth investigating a little further. And how would one go about doing that? I don't know.
How about the one open issue I think that we have? We've got the design and the access and traffic and stormwater management, I believe. I'm just looking at the detailed agenda so we make sure we talk about everything. just looking at the, the detailed agenda, so we make sure we talk about everything. I think those items are all set. Lighting, we had some concern that we were hoping that, the lighting plan I see, it does cover your whole parking lot now, because it looks like there are still gaps.
Yeah, again, it's not meant to be lit up.
No, which I appreciate, yeah.
Right, so that's the, the maximum amount of lighting we can get without putting holes in.
In the middle.
Spaces that it's going to occupy parking space. So around, around the perimeter, we're in the eye, you can see the two, we're in the island in the front, and we tried to move the one on the, I guess, to the right-hand side of the plan, closer to the apex of the triangle, to move it out as far as we can. Any other poles are going to need to be in the parking lot itself, and we're going to lose additional spaces for buses.
Yeah. Okay, so does, and do any board members have additional questions on the height of the poles? I think we satisfied, go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to say, I'm very pleased that they were able to lower them to fifteen feet and make sure they were dark skies compliant, so I don't have any questions.
Will they, will they motion activate, or they, will they be on all the time?
They're going to have the option, we both, they'll be, they have motion sensors on there, it can be a timer dusted on. I think the last time we discussed, I think, the police chief was suggesting dusted on, but they'll have the ability to either or.
Questions about that? I, I have a particular preference for motion activated, and I know that the, the police chief answered affirmatively that he liked your idea. I don't know that he, he decided between the two, but I have a sense that, that where you have gaps in particular, where you're not lit a hundred percent, for some reason, my head stubbornly wants to believe that a little bit of motion would, would help indicate that people are out there. But I do appreciate that we've brought the light poles down, for sure, and, and I think at least communicated to the schools that some deference to anybody, if it does end up being in a position, I know neighbors are far away and there's, there is some tree screening, but it's a very well-lit campus, so.
On page forty-one on our literature and sheet number eight of sixteen on Norris, I found the fifty-foot lighting pole assembly detail extremely weak. I tried to go to the mascot standards for a zero to thirty-foot pole, and I looked in each section, and there are multiple different choices. It would be wonderful if we could have the specific one that is there, because what this detail is showing, we would have failure on a high wind. I mean, this drawing itself, we would have a failure on a high wind.
What do you?
And the way the sleeve is drawn, it's not detailed enough.
Is there, do you have a question maybe for Beta?
Yeah, I was just hoping that they can revise the drawing on page, sheet number eight, for the fifty-foot lighting pole assembly. Or be more specific, it was a very general statement noted at the bottom.
I'm not sure I understand what it is you want on the.
So what it needs to show, it needs to actually show how it's cased in the concrete, the amount of PSI the concrete is, the depth of it, it needs to show what type of bolts are secured. It needs the whole detail.
It's on the foundation detail.
Of the lighting post.
Yeah. Do you have, Phil, do you have anything to, to add to that? Did you have any concerns about the, the lighting post and detail on that?
No, I stand in foundation detail would be fine.
Okay. Any other things on, I think landscaping and screening is all set, and I don't think signage is even an issue, is that we don't have any signs, do we? For any reason? It's just on our, our detail?
Well, we talked about directional signs would need to be changed throughout.
The design review board too, that was one of the notes they made, that to make sure the directional signs is updated for the new use.
Okay. So there's no issues?
I guess we haven't, no, but we haven't seen those signs, right?
No, so I would, I think we'd need to discuss what, does this sign, if it's on site, and if that is going to change how, and if added, if new signs will be added.
It could be added condition that they would throw new signs back next year when they're getting ready to.
I didn't hear you, Amy, I'm sorry.
New signs? I think it's, just a general discussion.
It'd be, it'd be minor signs, like particularly in the driveway, because we have it a one-way, one-way in, one-way out, it's probably be a do not enter, or no left turn, minor signs on the, it'll just be on the access road, probably be a few signs, not, not ready.
Does anybody, do you want to condition that in a way?
I guess I was just wondering, maybe it could be conditioned that the design review board look at it at the time when the parking lot is constructed, is that reasonable, without having to come back?
Is, is that fine?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Could, could you come back to the design review board when you're ready to install the signs at the, at the end of the project? That be reasonable, without delaying them any further?
Georgia, help me out, is there a particular standard that has the signs on it for our decision?
I think it may only talk about access. I'll talk right now.
Yeah. Does anyone have any problem with asking them to come back to design review with their minor signage when the time comes? I'm fine with that.
Just add an anecdote, that at back-to-school night last week, I saw people driving between, you're not allowed to drive there, but between middle and high school, people were driving back between the two buildings, and there were tons of pedestrian parents coming in the dark, trying to get into the building, and I really think it could be better signed.
So that whole, right now, that whole back area is not for, open to traffic at all, right?
People still do it.
I know. But it's very obviously signed, I think. I think I notice it.
I don't.
When I might inch back. Okay. But it's a good, particularly where you will have, where you will utilize it, I think it's safe to say where you will utilize it in a different way, that being very obvious with your signage is not a terrible idea. I know that I have seen parents go back when teams are practicing in the lower gym of the middle school, and it's at night, and who knows if young people are, you know, darting to and fro and so forth. All right.
Chair, before you jump into the section.
Yeah.
Just a quick suggestion on the guardrails. I see that wooden guardrails will be there, and I commend you for that, that, I think that would be really nice instead of the metal guardrails. I had made that same suggestion to the marathon school, and they decided not to follow that. But one thing you might want to consider is the, the poles going into the ground, those can be metal and will last longer than the wood that I, I saw here, so. Thank you.
So I think that we have covered parking lot design, access and traffic, stormwater management, lighting, compliance with the standards, landscaping and screening, and signage. Is that agreed?
I have one more thing.
Yeah.
I had asked to cut back the egress, the bus egress flow, there's the island in between, to sort of cut back the design, the, that little island to give it a little bit more leeway for the bus drivers, because I have a feeling.
The V there, if we're looking at the light plan?
Yeah, so looking at the, well, that's the light plan.
That is the light plan, yeah.
But the exit, but, but the exit to, you know, to bring it back two feet, to give them more room, because even though the flow diagram gave the worst-case scenario, I could see it being a very messy process.
So where are you talking?
So, so, yeah. The, the lower left, the lower left, that, the last tree, bringing the curb back two feet, and maybe giving it a little bit more weightiness.
Shorter.
Yeah, shorter two feet.
Is there any problem doing that? I can't imagine. Yeah.
While it's planting. You could probably keep the tree.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah, just cut the.
Yeah. I, I really do appreciate the trees, I know it's an added expense and everything, but it's a, it's a, it's a nice to have between the building with the classrooms. It really is.
And the cafeteria.
No, right, everything, yeah, yeah. And I have heard from a couple teachers that they utilize that property for, you know, things, it'll, it'll, it'll make it nicer, for sure, I appreciate that.
Talking about trees, they're deciduous, so in the winter, there's not going to be any buffer in those spaces. I suppose it's not as important, you know, but they're fine.
This isn't your only shot at it, I will read it out loud for the purposes of the public, but I thought you'd. Okay, I'm just going to wait one second, I'm going to open the eight fifteen public hearing, and then we'll just go through this, and you folks will be, I presume, all set. Is it eight fifteen yet? Okay. I'm without a watch tonight, I'm going to help with my friend. So I will entertain a motion to open and continue the public hearing for Saddle Hill, Scenic Roads, till the conclusion of this public hearing, that's in.
So moved?
Process. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the benefit of the public, the draft conditions for ninety Hayden Row, I won't read them verbatim, but just go through them. The site disturbance in the wetland buffer zones and, and slopes in excess of twenty-five percent shall be minimized. The unique natural historic features shall be preserved whenever feasible. The tree vegetation and soil removal shall be minimized. Site plan standard D on the draft did indicate the detail about the red maples and the planting, and that is on your landscape plan, so those can come off, because they're part of your plan. The site activities shall be screened from view from abutting properties and residential use, methods of screening are detailed in, in general. All utilities shall be underground. The exposed storage areas, machinery, service areas, et cetera, shall be visually screened from abutting properties. The site plan shall show measures to reduce and abate noise and odors generated from the site that will impact surrounding properties. The site plan will comply with all zoning requirements. The site plan shall maximize the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and to and from adjacent public ways. The site plan, parking areas shall be designed so they are safe and convenient and don't detract from the use and enjoyment of proposed structures. The site plan shall minimize the number of curb cuts on public ways. Driveways shall be designed to ensure site, excuse me, safe site distances. The sidewalks shall be provided along the entire frontage of the subject property along existing public ways. Just as a note, sidewalks were adjusted on this plan to, to ensure that they are ADA compliant, and we appreciate that. The levels of illumination shall be provided as followed, and it's, there's detailed out hugely. Yes.
Would you like to put, going off Jeff's comment for the cut sheet, for that detail, would you like to add a condition that cut sheets be provided prior to construction for that light pole?
Is that okay? What does it need to, just cut sheets, that, that solves it?
It's, it's, yeah, whatever detail that M dot.
Foundation detail.
Dot, it's pointing to whole foundation detail.
Is that fine?
I went in and tried to find it in that form, and, yeah, it choose wrong, and I think it could be very confusing, Form One, or just part, make the Form One.
So is that no problem?
Not a problem.
Thank you. Standard O, adequate access shall be provided to each structure for emergency vehicles and personnel. P, form to applicable Mass Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Management regulations. Standard O, mechanical equipment or other utility hardware on the roof, grounds, or buildings, which doesn't apply. The site standard R, all dumpsters shall be screened from public view. In all site plan standards and zoning bylaws, the applicant shall comply with the following conditions. The director of municipal inspections will, will ensure that construction is getting compliance with the approved decision of the site plan review, and construction hours are detailed that are congruent with our.
Is that pretty typical seven PM?
Seven AM to seven PM.
That seems really long into the summer hours, if someone's trying to enjoy their backyard.
Is that typical?
That's typical.
I think it is typical.
I think particularly since it has to be done during the summer before school starts.
Yeah.
It's uncomfortable.
But aren't there decent neighbors?
I, I do think that those are typical hours, but do you know?
Yeah, those are the, those are all the hours of use for all our site plans.
So I'm comfortable with them.
Did we ask for comments from the public?
Oh, we, we didn't, I'm sorry. I'm going to finish reading, and then I will ask. And we were going to just add a condition that you would come back to the design review board when you do incorporate your signage. Okay. Yes. Comments from the public?
Going to, to a mic or?
I think if you speak loudly, they'll hear you.
So Gary Trendle, thirty-one Chamberlain Street, speaking as a, in a butter, not as a member of the planning board. Through the chair, I have a question and a comment.
Yeah.
My question, I'm wondering what other sites on the school grounds were, were considered for, for bus parking, if any?
Well, we looked at everywhere within, within the campus to try to separate the vehicle and the bus traffic, and this really was the only place that seemed to work.
So I mean, in terms of any of the other athletic fields, I mean, some of the unused athletic fields, were any of those considered, or?
Well, you have to keep in mind that you need to keep the buses proximity to the school. So even though those fields that are way down, which seem like they have a good amount of space, and they are fully utilized, but at the same time, it puts the, the walk for the middle school and the high school students, you know, far. They typically like to board those buses and have them rolling within five minutes.
Yeah, okay. So I guess this is my comment.
Uh huh.
For me, I'm, I'm very much against this, I just, I don't like the idea of putting another parking lot next to the school. It feels overly compact to me, there's, there's no room for growth. And while I, I appreciate the, the benefit of, of giving another place to load students, to me, the primary, to me, the primary benefit of this is actually storing the buses in town, and I think there's some costings associated with that, but it just, I just, I think of like all these buses that are going to be coming back after doing their loops, and are going to be parking, and people are getting out of cars, and talking, and getting into there, the bus drivers at nine-thirty in the morning when the kids are in, in session. It just, to me, it just doesn't make sense to store the buses at the same place where we, where, where you pick up the kids. So I just, since I'm sitting and listening to this, it just, I just feel like this is one of those things that we're going to look back on in, in ten years and say, why on earth did we do that? Like, that just doesn't make sense, so.
I do, I appreciate your comment. I think that I resolved it in my head, because there's the dual, the dual functionality of the increased safety for the parent to drop off and the necessary space in the front to increase safety as kids are walking to and from their own cars and to and from the buses and parents pick up, but.
Probably in ten years, on that point, we'll have a million dollars savings that we would have spent.
We'll, we'll see if we have that million dollars to count and savings.
I do hear that point, there are, could be other places, another location, but.
Yeah, I, I, you know, to the chair.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I, I think it's going to be, there's going to be undo pollution emitted right in front of the school, and I, and I just think that. in front of the school, and I, and I just think that, you know, maybe even back near, you know, 10 might be more appropriate, or somewhere over DPW, DPW behind our facility. I'm just not sure what land is granted back there, but I, I think that it's gonna be a mistake because just the fact that we're putting diesel fumes back there, and that's why I was, you know, sort of crossing my fingers when I was looking at this today, this afternoon, and saying, well, maybe we can justify it by putting some tableing back there so that we could plan for the future and reflect it. We wouldn't have to worry about it quite as much. But, you know, I think that potential is, is arriving more and more every year, and it's gonna happen quickly. So I just beseech you to look at that. I don't know if you have time or whether this is too far on in the process, but I think if you were to go in that direction, I would be much more favorable towards it.
To the chair?
Yes.
Just to kind of jump on the bandwagon a little bit?
Sure, jump on.
Was there any reason why Fruit Street wasn't considered Fruit Street property that we already own for, for bus storage?
Well, keep in mind, you still need to separate for offloading in the morning and boarding in the afternoon. So no matter what, you need this area to put the buses for the kids to be, you know, dismissed and loaded, whether the buses are there all day or not.
Right.
You still need this parking lot to have that function.
So to the chair, to, to your point, maybe it can be an evolution thing, right? If, if there is a decision that they'd be better off stored off-site, maybe something like Fruit Street would be, the combination of the two would work well together.
Right, so this gets at some of the immediate things.
Right.
Which is getting the buses into town, creating a safer flow, traffic flow for, for the students, you know, long-term. Maybe there's another place where they park during the day, but no matter what, you will need that area.
Makes sense.
There's also future property across the street that's part of the proposed increase for the campus development. Is that right? The Tadaro property is potentially used.
Yeah, that was where it was originally talked about, the first time I'd heard it, but yeah.
And I think that that just wasn't as far enough along to contemplate. Is that correct?
Well, I was very new to, but I believe they were trying to get it in under the guise and part of the Marathon project, but it came about too late in, in that, so I think that option, there is a group, I believe, that is studying the use of the Tadaro property, so I don't know where they're falling in terms of what those uses are, but it was a little late to the game to get it in under the Marathon build, so.
To the chair.
Frank? Yep.
It might be helpful with some context, historical context, your predecessor had a breakdown of, at the time, 25 buses when he started. 25 buses times 25 miles per gallon, or something like that, times the 32 miles extra that each bus was driving, that they currently still drive every day, compared to parking them in town, and adding the excise tax of the...
I think we're all believers on the financial benefit.
But when we're comparing diesel fuel being next to the school, there's gonna be a lot less diesel fuel, a lot less expenses, and a lot more money on, that we won't be spending on buses because of these.
I honestly think it's a challenge down at Fruit Street, too, because it's the town, the town wells and the whole diesel, diesel situation, but it doesn't mean it's not insurmountable. I just understand that there are some challenges, and if you park buses down next to the Marathon School or someplace close, the challenges are there, too, so I think... No matter what.
Yeah. We also talked about it on the Center School reuse committee, and the town was all laying behind the Center School.
Yeah.
And that area's a little bit too congested and a little bit too, even though there's a lot of space, it's hard, a little bit hard to get to. There's no bridge right now. We'd have to build a bridge to it, a land bridge. But there, there, over the past decade, there's been a lot of discussion about all, a lot of different locations. This plan is in front of us now, in front of you guys now, I think considers everything that's happened and covers it quite well, and is a solid answer to a real problem. So thank you.
Appreciate it, Frank. Anybody else with any conditions to add to the decision? So I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan for 90 Hayden Row.
So moved?
I should've said with these conditions as they were outlined. Any further discussion?
One point, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maybe this is to the applicants. This might be stating the question of the obvious, but if you start, let's say, June 20th, is the project plan set to have it done within approximately 60 days, so that in fall of 2019, this project will be...
It will be done before school starts.
What about South Street, where the town hall was, that huge parking lot?
To explore.
It would have to be, you know, to explore that. It would have to be rented, so there would be a fee associated with that, but it would be sort of out of the way of the huge congestion of Hayden Row, and they would have to travel there, so there's a little more expense that way. But at least until, I think we have a better handle on what the diesel fuel's gonna do to that area, I don't know. It seems like a possible, a possibility.
Everything, everything is definitely possible, yeah.
I wanted to say that I feel comfortable with the fact that they will look at options in the future, and that we don't have to decide on it right now, that this, the plan in front of us will work for the, for the near future, and they can enhance it if they need.
Yeah, I do appreciate the concerns and the suggestions, and I'm sure the school does, too, so. I also am a big fan of this. It's been a discussion point for a very long time for the financial benefits and the safety benefits, and I understand that it's not perfect necessarily to have the buses right next to the school in the back, but it's at least a good, solid first step, so I appreciate that. All those in favor? So we are back on schedule with Saddle Hill. Oh, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you so much.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? I do appreciate the friendly reminders. All right. Thank you. Does anybody know what page, the next? Sorry, I feel like...
1374.
This is 18 Saddle Hill?
I actually found my pages. Yes, 18 Saddle Hill.
There's an 18 and there's a 19. 18's on page 74.
It means document 18 or 18 Saddle Hill.
Welcome? So did we really have 8:15 to 8:30? We did, okay.
10 to 22, right.
Are you able to get that? Are you able to move that? Yeah, thank you. I don't know if it's new or not. We haven't been in this room, so. Second year?
It's pretty cool.
Yeah, 'cause I have it in front of me over here, which is amazing.
Wow, yeah. So the ways of working works on it would be really cool.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Well, you've heard of MEMA, right? The Emergency?
I have.
This is, this is HEMA, right here.
Well said.
Go ahead and introduce yourself for the public and tell us why you're here.
Sure, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Wayne Bellick, WDA Design Group. I'm here tonight with Victor Galvani of Saddle Hill Realty LLC, and we're here to request the board's approval of the scenic road permits for lots 5A through 11A, which would be numbers 10 through 22 on Saddle Hill Road. Like the previous filing that we had with the town for lots 1A through 4A, we had a bit of correspondence with Chief Slimon, who's here tonight as well, about providing him adequate access to the property, if you folks recall when we were dealing with lots 4A down to 1A. So what you have before you tonight are the seven applications, and that first illustrative that you look, would you like me to point here, just so it helps you folks?
Sure.
Yep.
Are you looking at the screen? Okay, so basically what we have, so lots 5A to 11A running right to left, and the lots, as you can see at the bottom of the exhibit, I do have photos of each lot entrance. What we had done is, we had gone out to the site identifying those areas that would be least intrusive, those areas that required the least amount of cutting, those areas that if we had a cluster of fairly mature trees, what we did is we made a selection, do we want to retain the hardwoods or do we want to retain the hines? So the hardwoods are more valued, they're cleaner, so we had some areas where we had some hines that we decided to come through at those locations. Other factors were departmental, and as well as the wall in those locations. The wall is pretty much uniform throughout, so you don't have larger sections of the wall, all the sections, they're pretty much the same height throughout. So that was the criteria for establishing the locations of the lots. As I said, when we met with you folks the last time for the previous lots, we had worked closely with Chief Slimon, and that was no different with this process here. I don't know how many times, how many iterations of the plan that we had sent to the chief to have him to review the auto turn exhibits, which I will get to right now. I'll get into the dimensions of the openings and what the, the numbers on the previous plan represent. So basically, lots 5, 5A, 6A, 7A, and 8A, as you can see, we've demonstrated using the auto turn simulation software, access onto the lots where the darker shaded area is the paved surface, and this area in here is going to be the honeycomb type papers that were approved at the last meeting. When we met with you folks before...
Agenda and keep continuing it. So I'm officially over it, but if everybody can think about that for the next time, and if we get a request for continuation, maybe time to just end it until they're actually ready to come before us.
This has been at least the third or fourth time.
Oh, more than that.
Been in chairment, so why don't we push them out even farther, give them more time? Or I don't know what the continued delay is.
So they are, they are revising plans, is what I've been told. So they wanted to come with a full revised plans about, that's all I know.
Before we give them a date and a time, maybe we can get back to them and say, what do they think is reasonable for their completion of that?
We can't. We have, we have to have a, a date and time certain. That much we have to do, for sure.
Especially, I think, this, doing it this way, I mean, we always dampen our time changes to the town clerk. That way, we know if for some reason the date would slip or something, and it continued, so we hold them liable having a time certain and a date certain.
Has there ever been a situation where you had to say, you know, you know, we have to put you off because we have other business to do?
Well, I'm just, I, I think that, that, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we could just tell them that, you know, we aren't gonna continue them without them coming in front of us. They have to come in front of us and have a conversation with us, because they have an approach that we haven't necessarily bought into and agreed to, and it may just be time to, you know, have that conversation and make that particular decision, and then they are at least working to a known guideline.
So could we publicly state that we're not gonna, we might, we'll continue it tonight, but that we will not continue it another time until they're able to come before us?
That's what I am recommending.
Have a date it's continued to.
Oh, we have to have a date, right? Because they have asked, and they're not here, and we have to have it continued.
So I'd like to make a motion that we contact them...
I'm listening.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yep, yep, no.
That we contact them and let them know that they will need to be present for the next time.
So we have a motion, just to be clear, and so we might throw that in there.
Just going back to the motion, do we also have an option to just deny the application?
At that time, not at this time, because they aren't here, right?
So they have to be here for us to deny it?
Yeah, so we have...
...process of others and opening the hearing and having the discussion.
Right.
Should I change my motion to a friendly amendment?
So, Georgia, I'm sorry. So can we tell them that we are going to have a conversation, if we put, we put them off till the 29th?
Yes.
And we, they have an agenda slot for 7:45, and we are not gonna continue them without them showing up. They're gonna have to come and make their presentation, for better or worse, on that time?
I say we do that, and then if there's an issue with that, we can handle it after, but that way, it's on the 29th, and we'll not have to say otherwise, we can tell them that it will not be changed to another hearing.
Right. Is that, is that satisfactory to everybody? That makes me feel...
Although for open meeting, I think the language should be not likely to continue if that is the case, because we are only discussing rescheduling this meeting. We can't not discuss rescheduling that meeting.
I think to your point, Frank, we should be a little softer, right? Because you can't tell, I mean, what if some, for some reason they can't?
Because you're dead fast against it. You can say vote no now, and then let it expire.
We need at least a no from their doctor, if they're not gonna be able to make it.
So, so I guess I would just communicate to them that we're not gonna entertain an option where they just don't show up. They need to come the next time. We've continued them till the 29th. They need to appear.
And outside of this...
And, you know, the neighbors are gonna be, will know that they're gonna appear, and for whatever conversation we have, we're gonna have a conversation on the 29th. Is that, is that fair?
And outside of this situation, A developer is here, and he left, and he has asked for more time, but also neighbors showed up, and it's not convenient for people to schedule their lives around decisions that are...
No, it's very, it's very difficult, and it's, it's frustrating for people, so...
The applicant could withdraw and resubmit an eligibility...
Absolutely, right? The applicant can definitely withdraw. There's, you know, there's, there's some discussion about his approach, and there's some complicating factors, and he is well within his rights to withdraw and resubmit, absolutely. Right, so it would be, I mean, if we, even if we took action to deny it, I would imagine it would be without prejudice, and they, he would still have that right to come back and, and resubmit.
Move that way vote?
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so let's do this thing on the 29th, or not, but not continue it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
No problem. We're back.
Problem. I understood.
Oh, wait, yes, nope, I got it.
He's been on board. He's been on many boards, so he's...
Yeah, this is exactly why I combine the filings for the four-foot temporary opening with the, just not to take up your time, so. So again, is in a further effort not to take up your time, we could go one way or the other. If you look at the lots, you can see a point on this plan. So you will see a little chart of the lot number on each plant, on each lot, and what that represents is the typical driveway entrance detail above, which shows, for instance, A is actually the curb cut along the existing paved surface. B would be the edge of that travel surface for the entrance that would accommodate the fire apparatus. C would be the removal of that section of wall, and D would be the reconstructing of that wall into the site. So if you folks wanted to take a quick peek and you have any questions, or if you wanted me to go through the numbers, I can do that, whatever works.
So, sorry, just to...
Go ahead.
Just to confirm, so D is the amount of wall that you're removing?
Reconstructing.
Reconstructing.
Returning back.
Between 35 and 40 per lot.
Correct, yes. And just, just so, you know, I think the board can look back into their records. I think that for lots 1 and 4, the road opening was a little, the wall openings, I think, were a little wired, wired, so I really pushed it to try to tighten these up a little bit. I'm not sure, but I'm fairly confident that was the situation.
If I may?
Hold on, go ahead, Carol.
Just, how tall is this wall?
Just, how tall is this wall that you're moving? How high?
Couple of, couple of three feet.
Okay. Because I will, I will tell you, having a stone wall like this on my property, it's, it's not a very good snowplow stopper.
Yep.
Every year I have to pick them back up and put them back where they are.
Sure.
So if it's not high enough so it's visible, it's just going to get run over every year.
Right. Well, if the board wanted to add a condition rather than, I think I showed a couple of feet off, if you want to add another foot, if that makes you, makes you comfortable.
I would be more comfortable, or be most comfortable with it maintaining the same height as it's coming around the corner.
Yep, well, that, that would be the plan. Yep, that's exactly the plan. So what we want to do, as I said, is just have it look like it's always been there. When all of a sudden...
That's what we want, too.
Yep.
Yep. Now, we were just having a very light conversation. Go ahead, Frank.
At this point, maybe we should ask Chief Slaman just to explain the numbers in the Mike Shepherd example from last meeting. Maybe let's go to our professional and get our...
Let's go to our expert. Thanks, Chief.
I'm not sure how I turned into the expert here, but...
Congratulations.
You probably missed a meeting and we voted you.
The applicants have gone out of their way to give me a clear picture on how this meets my ability to access the site for public safety reasons. I'm really comfortable. Your board has worked, this is really a pilot to see how we do work in some of our scenic roads and how challenging they are. So I almost look to you to continue your digestion of how they're doing. It's, the swept path analysis is the answer to the problem. It allows us access. I see that I have access. The areas where it's not the traditional paved driveway, we'll see how that works. I think that's just part of the journey, working with our scenic roads, and I'm okay with that. We just watch for some maintenance long term. How do these look 10 years from now? This is a perfect pilot, because it's, they have an agreement that they can write it into, and we can kind of go back if it's not working out well in maintenance to travel over that area.
Oh, the homeowner agreement.
Yeah, so I don't, they truly do engineer the solution, I don't, so.
Okay, perfect. I just, follow up question for you. Does this allow you to only enter the site from one direction?
It does, and again, kind of the give and take, our scenic roads. I do a lot of work on each site. The primary response to these sites that I see, and as far into the future as I can see from where our stations may be, I'm happy that this answers it. In that unique situation, that a mutual aid engine comes from a different direction, then they're going to have to adapt. And again, there's roads, there are driveways, we have to adapt some, but I just, I think in the spirit of solving a problem without really blowing up the scenic roads, I think this is a good solution.
Just looking, anybody? Yes, Amy?
Just going to suggest we add some sort of condition if we approve the scenic road stone wall removal, that we see a photograph of it at the end of the project?
Yeah, I think, we talked about it before, I think, about taking pictures, and, and I know that you haven't started to replicate the stone walls anywhere, have you? Because I think I drove, I drove up...
So I think we're still in the process where they're working on the landscape.
Yeah, you guys are the lucky recipients of a, you know, a bad experience elsewhere, so we just, we all thought we were on the same page. So we're looking for those stone walls to, as closely as possible, replicate what they look like now with new driveways. And you just talking about stockpiling the stone and keep making sure the weathered stone stays so it's shown and so forth. And we know it won't be exactly the same, but it should replicate what the rest of the road, what it did used to look like and what the rest of the road looks like. So I don't know how we want to...
Hello, to the chair, I might suggest a method. What we could ask the applicant to do is to take a picture of your favorite section of that, of the existing wall, and that be your example as to how the next one's going to look.
Right.
And then if Carol, you know, required it to be three feet high, then we'll understand that it'll happen.
It'll be the height that it was, right? It's not going to be a different height.
Were you suggesting higher?
No, I was suggesting that it stay the way it is.
Oh, okay.
And I think we've made it perfectly clear to the applicant that we want it to look exactly like what it looks like now, just turn in a corner. And I, I personally think it would be excessive to ask you to take photographs. We can check it out at some point during the future and understand that if you didn't do what you said you were going to do, then we're going to make you redo it.
So, and I do appreciate that. We love to take photographs of our work when it's done. So we have absolutely no reservation in taking the photographs, we can forward it to Georgia.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions from anybody who hasn't spoken? Go ahead.
I just, I might disagree with that. I think because of the situation we just had, I think that we have to have some sort of common method of communication, and it's not because we don't think you know what a farmer wall is, or that, that you're not going to, it's just that we have to have a standard method that, you know, this is what a, what a stone wall looks like, or this is what, you know, this is what the old stone looked like. So I think we need to enter into the documents, sort of, that, those images, so that we have them, we can pull them up and say, so that we know that you acknowledged, or whoever is changing a stone wall acknowledged that this is what it looked like.
I concur with that.
I think we recommended taking pictures before, because you have this big, long stretch, and you're, you're, you're doing work, and, you know, the scenic wall was, was an issue there as well. But I don't think it's excessive to take pictures of it and to try and, you know, replicate it as closely as possible. I would do that for myself as, as a methodology, I wouldn't...
Sure, Madam Chair. So I have those images, I do have...
Yeah.
Images of that.
Yeah.
So I can forward that to the town if that suffices, so that way you can zoom in and see the...
That's like the base.
Yeah, no, I just, I just think it makes sense, particularly where you have, when you get to, what's the schedule of starting to replicate? Are we going to wait till the end at this point? Because I haven't seen any go back.
You guys are close on three and four.
As we're getting close to closing the houses, three and four, that's when the replication's going to happen. So we're going to get the pavers to come in, once that driveway's paved...
Yeah.
And that grid, honeycomb grid goes in, that's when the wall's going to be replaced. Once all the big, those, you know, there's a lot of heavy equipment out there, once that stuff's out and onto a different lot, that's when, you know, all the final grading will be done, the wall will be finalized.
For my purposes, for my thoughts, it will help me if you take some before and afters, so that we just can, can, you know, hold on to the standard that we're hoping to...
Absolutely.
Maintain, yes.
Just one quick note, I can't remember, there's a total of eleven, I believe, houses.
That's correct.
So the other four, did we already approve those, or are they coming back for those?
This is the last bunch, right?
Yeah, approved the first one through four, and then this is the remaining seven lots.
So this is the second piece of it. Thank you.
That's correct.
And I don't think we've done, we haven't decided anything differently. I think we talked about photographs before, too, just for everybody's comfort and ease of putting it back.
To the chair, I just, I don't want to push this issue, but the pictures that are shown here are when there's a lot of green. When, when is the work going to be done, this fall?
For these lots?
For these lots.
I guess that'll vary depending on when we have, you know, buyers for some of these lots. It was Wayne, you know, I know some of them are difficult to see, especially this, you know, this far away. Those pictures aren't blown up.
I was thinking when it's deteriorated, then it's going to be so much easier to see.
Some areas of the wall are failing.
I tried to zoom in right here, and I can't, I really can't see, it's very shady.
Some of them are pretty buried. There's a lot of dirt and like, you know, loam and stuff, sediment that's built up up against the walls, so some of the stuff, you mean, it's, it's fairly difficult to see.
Unless you're right there, it's hard to know that there's even a wall there.
Almost anything in some of the areas that we're going to be breaking.
I think in the fall, it'll be a lot easier to take a couple of pictures.
Yeah. So as you folks may also know of your, your stone walls, there's the base stones as well. In my first several years working in the industry, I worked at Aquanaut's just next door here. And having done survey for like three years, they had a lot of great base stones in these walls. Unfortunately, once in a while, you find some knucklehead surveyor has had a drill hole in a little cobble sitting on top of the wall like this. But for the most part, a lot of those walls are embedded, you know, a foot to two in the, in the ground. They did a great job way back when. So like I said, those, as, in speaking with Chris Donahue, I instructed him to take the surface stones off, put it off to the side, the middle tier, put it off to the side, and then excavate the bottom stones. And that's how it needs to be constructed as they had originally for structural integrity.
Well, hopefully you will be a case study in excellence for us. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking forward to.
I hope to be. My wife calls me a case study all the time.
Yeah. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions? So I'll entertain a motion. I don't, I lost my, my computer.
Please, with a moment, that's a criteria.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. So the final criteria has to be satisfied, the degree to which the proposed work would adversely affect the scenic and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road designation was originally based, and so that's part of our emphasis on reconstructing it in the like manner that it exists. The necessity for the proposed work in terms of public safety, welfare, or convenience. So public safety, we're working with that, and also just your ability to construct your sites, obviously. Compensatory action proposed such as replacement of trees or walls, this is just walls, right?
Correct.
Right. So you're going to replace them as best as you can. And the availability of reasonable alternatives to the proposed work which could reduce or eliminate anticipated damage to trees or stone walls. And whether the proposed work would compromise or harm other environmental or historical values. Lastly, consistency of the proposed work with previously adopted town plans and policies. So I will entertain a motion on the, the request.
So moved.
To approve? Just asking?
Yes.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
In a second? Okay. Any further comments?
So for the discussion, are we going to condition it on that we're going to see photographs of before and after?
Yeah, we're going to put that into the, the decision that we're seeing photographs before and after. We have the before, right? You'll send them in?
Yes, and I, you know, I could, I could have some, you know, to one of the members' requests when the foliage is down, I could probably get some pics out there.
Send what you have now, and then we want to always remain a reasonable board as well. So depending on when you, you are doing your dismantling and doing your reconstruction and so forth, as best as you can...
Okay.
Keep us up to date with photographs, that's very nice.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Oh, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh my gosh, you guys are amazing. All right, so it's a continued discussion at nine o'clock, so, not a public hearing, thank you very much.
Nine o'clock's slow.
That clock is slow, yeah. Okay, so Mr. McDowell, yes, yes. Welcome. So we have a half an hour before our next public hearing. So we want to do the Wilson Street, but I also know that you would like to talk about the sidewalk if it's possible, so we'll keep those two things...
Sure. Would you like to do Wilson Street first?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we've spent some time with VHB as our engineers, they've spent some quality time going back and forth with Phil at Beta, and I think that we've come up, we've come up with a design and a solution, hopefully that Phil will say this evening is acceptable to them. And what it entails is significantly enlarging the basin, probably to the tune of four times its current size. Originally, we thought maybe two, but, so it's going to be significantly larger, there's some additional work that's going to be done. I think our engineers, and hopefully Phil feels the same way, are very confident it will be more than adequate. But I think it would be helpful to hear what Phil has to say.
I do, too. Did you have VHB as well coming, or?
No, I didn't think it was necessary.
Go ahead, Phil, I'm sorry.
So again, for the record, my name is Phil Paradis with Beta Group. We've been hired to review this on behalf of the town and protect the town and their residents. So we've, we've had a little bit of back and forth, and I do agree with Roy on this, that the portion of runoff that comes from the previously Legacy Farms Road parcel, now the Trails at Legacy. So let me back up, give you a little history of what I learned in this process. So initially, Legacy Farms Road, Legacy Farms was developed with the idea of primarily providing treatment of runoff and not necessarily mitigating the peak rate and, and volume of runoff from the site. I think there was some agreement with Legacy, with the nursery, that they wanted to continue to have the water to, for their part of the, the site. So they would, they would collect the water down grading. So, so, so there was, in fact, an increase in the runoff as a result of this project to Wilson Street. Now that we are going back and retrofitting this, this basin to meet, to meet the peak rate and volume of runoff as well, that, that should no longer be an issue. So they, as Roy stated, they enlarged the basin significantly, and then we've also gone back and forth, make, back and forth to make sure that the assumptions that were made to, to assume that those rates were very conservative. So, for instance, just on the condition of the, of the surf, the existing surface itself, we had a debate about whether we should call it cultivated, as was the majority of, of Legacy Farms, the parcel before Roy started developing. There's, there is a little bit of history that we went through Google Earth and noted that for a good, maybe at least the last 10 years, that section was not as cultivated as some of the other sections. So we, we agreed to, instead of a poor soil, we made it a fair soil. So, so, so that, that, in a sense, brought down the, the rate of runoff and the existing conditions in which we have to compare it to for the proposed conditions. And so, so we able to do that. And then also, because we do have some experience now with that parcel as it relates to infiltration and stone wall runoff, we've had a few issues already over there at the Trails at Legacy with a lot of sediment being run off the site, which is a very good indicator that the soils are, are poor for infiltration. And so we, again, went back and forth relative to what the rate of infiltration was, and so we've, we've helped, we've asked them to hold what's a C soil, is what, what NRCS has designated in this area. So the long and short of it is, I think Beta is very comfortable with the current design as it relates to mitigating the peak rate of runoff from the site. Mind you, we, we do have to be cognizant of the fact that there was runoff from this parcel onto Wilson Street before the development. So there, there was runoff. Roy is now mitigating what the development of Legacy Farms Road North, so that it's not more than what was running off. So, so I just want to make sure that that's a, that you understand what we're doing here. So there are other parts of Wilson Street that are contributing runoff, that Roy is not addressing at this time, and it may be subject to additional solution, whether it would be DPW or some other improvements on Wilson Street.
So can I ask if you can explain to, to us how you know what did exist and what we are mitigating back to?
So before, before we, before a project is, before, before you go and design a, a drainage system, you have to model it best, best, you know, with the best assumptions you can. And that's why we wanted to check Roy's model, relative to surface condition, soil type, amount of runoff, rainfall events that you want to, you know, mitigate, and then, and so you put all those components into a model, and the model spits out, and so, no, I mean, you, you develop a... No, I mean, you, you develop a, a, a rate of runoff and a volume based, again, based on a theoretical storm event, you know? There's, there's no exact science in this, but it's, it's mostly assumptions. And so, then, and then, when you, when you go to design your system, you design components to it to either slow down the, slow down the runoff, infiltrate it, detain it, retain it, what, you know, there's several ways to do it, so.
Maybe I can ask it a different way. How do we measure success with some surety with this, this particular proposal?
So, again, it's, the, the assumptions, I don't know that you can measure success in the way, you know, you get a right answer in a test, and, you know, there's no way around.
I do like that way, but, you know.
If I, if I could interject a little bit, I thi, I think when, when you look at the situation now, in a, in a very heavy rain, it, it can overflow. As a matter of fact, we've seen evidence of it, so we, we don't dispute that. I think what's happened here is what, what we finally have agreed to, I will tell you, is much more aggressive than VHB thought was necessary. But, you know, to, to Phil's defense on this issue, as Phil said in a, in a call last week, he said, "Look, it, it's now my name on this plan, not just VHB's plan." So, I think he wanted us, if we're going to err at all, is to err on the side of being more aggressive in the size of this and the capacity of this than less. So, I think this thing, as I mentioned, I think is more than four times the size of the current one. And I think when you look at what has been designed in this, I'm very confident that this is going to be more than adequate. Phil's statement?
Yeah, I know, a lot of people have questions. Did you?
Mine's a simple question. You said you designed this, this is four times bigger than before. How much bigger is it than VHB thinks you need?
Well, any engineer will tell you bigger is always better. I mean, the worst case, you're just excavating some more. So, I mean, VHB thought this probably could be sixty, seventy percent of the size that we're agreeing to do.
Okay, thank you. Praying to you have questions?
Yes. Talk about metrics. Previous algorithm featured data that maybe didn't match what you wanted it to be because it was a little bit more runoff than we expected. And then you looked at it, adjusted the algorithm, which brings us to numbers that should be within, once it's all completed, should be no runoff or a lot, significantly less runoff. So, the metric would be, is the algorithm correct? And previously, we found that maybe it wasn't, maybe, hopefully, this one will. So, the metric is, in real life, is there less runoff?
Well, there needs to be less runoff, right? I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, it's problematic at the moment, but I do know.
I don't think the right, and Phil can correct me, I don't think the term is going to be less runoff. It's going to be the exact same amount of runoff. The question is, is it going to be contained?
How it's handled, I mean.
Yes.
Not going in the road.
The runoff is not changing. It's the containment of the runoff. Right now, there isn't sufficient area to contain it and eventually let it percolate through the soil. Now, this area here being, and not only that, but you're adding some stone breaks in this thing to slow it down. So, I think there's a number of things that are going to happen with this new version that's multiples better than what we have today.
Yes.
So, when you're designing this thing, you know, I'm thinking storms are getting worse at a magnitude of years worse. What kind of foresight do you put into that, that type of planning at this stage of the game?
So, so what we've used is the, is the, the current standard for the development of Legacy Farms. We didn't ask them to do extreme rainfall data. The, however, the amount of reduction in runoff is, is significant in that the original rain garden, that's what, that's what was designed, could only, only treated a half an inch of runoff. So, we are, we are controlling the runoff for up to six and a half inches of runoff. So, it's a significant increase in, mind you, there's still going to be a considerable run of runoff getting to Wilson Street, because there was that kind of flow onto Wilson Street from the existing parcel.
So, is a six-inch level of runoff, is that a 50-year storm, 25-year storm, or is that something that we're experiencing today?
So, that would be, that would have been, what would have been the model for, it's called TP-40, which was the standard that was used. It's, it's data that was collected in the 60s and used for a significant period of time to, to design stormwater management systems. Currently, the new data that's collected through Cornell University, in which we, which we've, we've actually accommodated in the town's regulations here, is the extreme rainfall data, which would be closer to eight and a half inches. So.
So, if we're accommodating it to the current town at eight and a half inches, and this thing's not built yet, should we be, should we be adjusting the flow so that it's six times versus four times this thing?
All right.
Did I get, did I get the metrics right? So, you're saying that the town is now requiring six for, for larger quantities of rain than the TPR-40?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But this was all approved under a previous, you know, the special permit was approved like 10 years ago.
So, what extent would we be asking him to do if he were to do a bigger rain garden? And would it be, would it be smart? Would it be, would it be?
It, it's, it becomes, the, the, it becomes, you're going to be comparing eight and a half to eight and a half, existing and proposed. So, you're going to, if you, if you did, if you ran the existing conditions model at eight and a half inches, you would get a lot more runoff under the existing conditions as, under the eight and a half. So, you might get a slight increase in the basin to, to mitigate that, but it wouldn't, it, it's not going to be as significant as this going from a half inch to six and a half inches. So, if you understand what I'm saying by that.
I, I also think it's important to remember that this road, when it was designed, was fully vetted by FST at the time for what it was proposed to be. And the town actually is the one that built the road. We didn't. So, this whole road was built under the auspices of the town, under a contract with the town. Now, you know, one might argue, hey, look, it is what it is, but we recognized the problem. We stepped up to the plate, and we said we would agree to pay to do this, even though I might argue it's not really our responsibility. So, that's the reason why, when you engage Phil, we engage VHB, and we've kind of gone back and forth, expanding well beyond what I thought would ever be to get to where we are today. So, I think, I think this is being more than reasonable.
I'm going to go ahead and keep going around the table for questions or comments.
Pretty mature, but there's some butters or residents here that I think is what they're going to do.
I understand, yeah.
So, I've got a couple of questions. One is, this basin is going to be on the north side of Wilson.
Correct.
Right? So, I think that hopefully is going to capture a lot of what goes there. What comes down Legacy North, is that going to be captured? Is there a catch basin there in the corner?
That road, no, that road is actually pitched to that swale.
Yeah.
What we've got to do, when we do this work, we're going to be adjusting that soil so, in fact, it does shed across and over. There's some instances now where the soil is actually higher than the road.
Yeah.
So, we'll take care of that at the same time.
Okay, so that's the second one. And then the third one is kind of coming back a little bit more, even to the south side of Legacy North, there's that existing basin. Now, I think if that, the issue there is it just hadn't been cleaned, and do we think that that action is going to be able to mitigate? Because when I go down there, there's those three places. One is that first one there. The second is what I just talked about off of Legacy North, and it sounds like the plan is there. And then the third one is that basin for the area, which is the bigger, is the biggest one.
So, actually, there's three.
Right.
There's two basins beyond that headed up towards National Grid, two of them totally clogged, so everything just races right by. And the one you're referring to, yes, that needs to be cleaned, but if you look at where the pipe goes, it goes over towards National Grid. And I was actually, I went over all this with John Westling in the field a number of months ago, and John said at some point, the town will deal with it. When they are doing it, I don't know. Some of it's cleaning basins, some of it's fixing the contour of the pavement. I think if those things are done in conjunction with this, that will help significantly.
Hit the trifecta, if you could.
I, I agree.
How was that, Matt? Okay. Back to all this. For one thing, the timeline in terms of getting this done, this is one thing that, I'm just going over our minutes from our last, the last time we met, which was in June 25th. And, and we had all basically agreed to the, the concept that about two months from design through review and actual construction, that was, that was, I know ballpark timeline, but it also involved us meeting again in July, which was put on the schedule, but then continued to today. So, so we're, this I'm just addressing because I believe the damage potentially being done along Wilson Street and so on, obviously, we've been having large rainfalls right now. The longer we wait, the worse it gets. And I'm sure the more frustrated the people get. So, that's, that's one point.
Do you want an answer to that?
And I would say, I would say near the end of the discussion, we can just talk about timing again and just, you know, just reiterate what we're, we're all working at, so we can understand that. The second is, just, I'm just reading from the minutes of June 25th. It was noted that DPW can start work on the catch basins, which I believe you were just referring to, within the next 10 days. I don't know if that happened, if they're still clogged, or if they became clogged again, but that's one point. And there was also some discussion, and I wanted to just check with the chair on this, there was discussion on this, in the same day about replacement of trees and so on, and I'm not sure if that is a separate point from the, from the drainage and so on.
So, replacement of trees that were part of the other project or our general discussion?
It was all in the same discussion. And so, that, I was confused by that.
I have some input to that. So, Roy did say, I think it was five trees that he would put in. Now, if you didn't bring it up, I was going to bring it up as well. My preference would be that they're maple trees, something that'll grow big, and that we get them in soon before the winter, because the longer they can grow, the better. That's, was going to be my comment.
Okay. Because I, I think some trees do have some relationship to the drainage, so I just, I wanted to make sure that that didn't get lost, but I wasn't sure it was part of the same discussion. So, let's see, the other notes I had. And proposed timing for the five replacement trees, and, and Mr. McDowell stated that mid- mid-September would be a good time. So, that was, again, that was based on our original timeline, but, but that's.
Would you like me to answer those two?
That would be great.
Okay, great. So, assuming we can agree on this proposed plan in, in means and methods, I think this work should be done before winter, because if it's not, you get rain, you get snow, you get ice, you got all this stuff going on, and I just think it's just going to exacerbate the issue. So, assuming we can get approval, I will immediately get to our contractors and see how quickly we can get this done. Ideally, here we are, we're almost mid-September. I would hopefully get it completed by, I'll just pick a timeline as a guess at the moment, by the end of October. And at that point, the trees really don't want to go until this is done, because they could be in the way. So, I think, I think our goal would be to try and get the five trees and this completed by the end of October.
And I know that there were, there were some other butters. I just wanted to, one of the butters had mentioned that she'd lived there since 1984, and there was never a drainage problem on Wilson Street until the construction took place. And that was, that was just the statement at the time, and, and I just think that sometimes when we discuss things a second time several months later, we forget what had been stated by other people, so.
Appreciate that. Amy?
No.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had gone.
No, no. I was just getting into, sorry. So, I, I kind of feel like we should just move forward with the increasing the size four times. I don't think we should go beyond that. I don't think we should go to the extreme. I think that four times the size would be appropriate, just in my unknowledgeable opinion. Also, though, I think separately, we should either create a letter or somehow contact the DPW and find out what they can do to help, because we had talked about things like the gutter going down the side of Wilson Street, you know, maybe putting some drainage there. Like Roy said, do some, some grading of the road if possible, so I don't think, I want to tie it up in this meeting, because it doesn't affect Roy, but I would like to pursue that as well.
Amy?
I think I'm okay. I think everyone's stressed my concerns, and I know there probably are butters that would like to speak.
I definitely think there are butters that would like to speak, so if we can.
Why do you have your fingers crossed?
What's that? To remind myself, I have a couple more questions.
Oh.
Katie, if I can have you come forward, any butters who want to speak. I just have to have you come forward so the folks at home can hear you, okay?
Wait, do you want me to talk?
Come right up here, so you can introduce yourself, and people can see you and hear you.
Katie Towder, Nine Kruger Road. So, if I was the board, I would be outraged at this news story, this ever-changing story about the drainage problem. To say, tonight, they're saying that there was never a design done for peak runoff of this project, ever. There, and, and for that to come out at this stage, just, you know, off the cuff, and, okay, let's move on, that, that, I would be outraged. You should all be outraged about that. And this story about the reason it wasn't done is because Western Nurseries wanted to use the water, well, that's, you know, that, that's just completely outrageous. Here we are on the fourth design, since, since, since supposedly responsibility was taken for this problem. It sounds to me tonight like that responsibility is being untaken, that the, the first design, which was no design at all, which has been admitted to, the second design, which was off by a factor of 10, okay? The, the, the calculation that they said it would drain at two inches per hour, Beta came back and told them, no, it's only going to drain at .27 per hour. And then the third design, where they come back and, and don't even acknowledge what they've just been told, they come back and say, they argued with the point. So, it brings up the question, who's, who's doing this design that they, that, that they're not doing the engineering? There, there is a distinct lack of engineering, and what, what I see is with design four, it's being claimed that, that this is four times better. Well, four times zero is zero. Okay? If we don't do the engineering to determine what the runoff is, and then, then, you know, dig in a ditch a half a foot deeper is, is nonsense. And, you know, there's a 26-foot pipe, this, this is not a plan either that tells, that is suitable for construction. You know, this does not tell somebody where to put this. There, there's a 26-foot pipe here. Where is that going? Is that going into the wetland? You know, what wetland? So, so I don't see that, that the engineering has been done. There hasn't been a, a percolation test to see that the, the report says that, that there's a significant blockage to drainage at 32 inches. So, you know, I, I think what they're saying tonight is maybe they're not going to be able to do a design, you know? Well, they, they should do the engineering. They should do a, a test to see, see what rate it does drain at, okay? And, and if they don't want to take responsibility, then the board needs to, to, to take another look at this and figure out who's going to take responsibility, because, you know, just, just saying, go dig it a little bit deeper and, and let's call it a day, you know? I think, I don't think that's why we have boards. I think we have boards to, 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 you know, review designs, and I don't, I don't. And I don't, I don't see a design here. I don't see a design. So, I would ask the board to, 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 to order the engineering to be done, or to take other sanctions within their powers, such as not to sign off on occupancy permits, or whatever, whatsoever in your jurisdiction. You know, you, you're supposed to be reviewing these things, and when, when, when the drainage doesn't work, you're supposed to come back and order the developers to fix it. So, this, I appreciate that we wanted to do this informally, but I think, you know, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. We're up to four times now.
Okay, Katie.
And with number four, the, the responsibility is, they're, they're just kinda saying, well, we just found out there was no real design, so, hey, let's take a swag at it, and, you know. It's not, it's not right.
Thank you. Phil, can you just speak to the basic question of, of the engineering that goes into this?
Again, I, I can't speak to the history of this. We weren't on board by then. From, from what I, what, from what I understand, it was vetted at the time. But I think in this situation, there's a unique issue with additional water being directed to Wilson Street because of this part, because of Legacy Farms Road North project. And, and some of the assumptions that were made. You know, I, I've been doing this for 30 years, so I, I understand, you know, the challenges of, of making assumptions and, and trying to do the best, using your best engineering judgment. And it's, and it's become more and more apparent as projects are being, relying heavily on infiltration systems, is that there's a lack of knowledge of how much infiltration's gonna happen in, in some of these sea soils, so.
I'm gonna just do a little timeout here. I'm gonna entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 9:30 at 52 and 55 Wilson Street. And then continue it until this conversation is brought to a close. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
If I, if I could address the chair, it really isn't fair to say that this hasn't been engineered. There's been significant time spent on the part of VHB and Beta to review extensively the designs for what is being proposed now. What was designed originally served whatever purpose you wanna call it, but the reality is, this has been greatly expanded to accommodate significantly more potential capacity than is even there now. So, it isn't like someone's just been winging it. VHB, a very reputable firm, Beta, a very reputable firm, have come to an agreement on a design that we feel is more than adequate, and that's what we're here for this evening.
I appreciate that.
To the chair.
I just wanna see if there's any other butters, or any other members of the public who came that wanted to speak to this. Just wanna make sure I got everybody. Okay. Yeah, Frank?
Really, our colleague asked a specific question. I don't know if we got an answer based on the redesign, but, so I'll, like, through the chair, I'd like to ask this question of Phil. Based on the, the math we've heard, could this redesign be built bigger to actually be more effective? And isn't that what we, is that what we should be doing? Or can you explain, maybe answer what her original question was? If maybe you can clarify.
Yeah. I guess what I would say, if we were to require it built to the Hopkinton standards, understanding that a great extent of work has been done, and I'm at, and I totally respect, respect this, and I like the idea of a, of a garden. To what degree would we be changing the soil to make it eight inches versus six and a half inch rainfall? What would we have to do to AP, to, to make it, to beef it up, to make sure that in the next 25 years, it doesn't overflow? Because we, we are getting more water, and we, and we should plan for it, and I think it would be.
So, Deb, I just wanna make sure we ask a question.
I'm just asking.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Frank, the next time you ask a question, ask your own.
Okay.
And I just wanna make sure we ask a direct question that we can get an answer to.
Okay, so that's, what would we need to do to AP to make it, to improve it slightly?
So.
Right up to standard.
Right, right. So, stormwater management is all about risk, risk control, you know? What happens when you design something for a probability of, you know, 1% chance of happening, which is a 100-year storm or that? So, so 1% chance is, is a very low, you know, obviously statistically, it's a very low thing. So, if we design all our systems to that 100-year standard, then obviously you're gonna spend a lot more money on infrastructure and whatever. So, it's always been a battle between risk versus reward in, in these kinda situations. The, the problem with, and, and then obviously, when standards change over time, when, when do you go back? When do we retrofit? And when do we design something to this higher standard? And is it, is it really a better reward for the amount of expenditure we're doing? So, so, and obviously, we can run the numbers and say, you know, it's gonna be x cubic feet bigger, so.
Yeah, is it possible, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
To the chair.
Were you finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would, is it possible to do that in, in a week? I mean, is it possible to do it in a few days, just to get a grasp as to whether it's a reasonable request?
Well, the other question becomes the cost issue. I mean, this is now three times what we anticipated even doing. I, I don't know where you stop. If eight inches is good, 10 would be better, 12 would be better than that. I'm not quite sure where you stop.
So, actually, we're not gonna have a debate here? We're not?
Wondering what it would take.
So, I also wanna say something else, is that we are operating in sort of a, a
Gray.
Different space, right? And so, we are all trying to work with each other to come up with a much improved system out there. So, we don't really have, it, it just isn't defined what, what traction we have and what authority we have to make changes and so forth. Although reasonable questions in my mind are always, always in play. I have a question, and I see that you have one too, so I'm coming to you. But I have a question about how we measure success, right? I still have that same question.
I just had a follow-up. I asked Roy a question about how much bigger he thought this was than it needed to be to meet the stormwater standards. Asking you, as, as the town's consultant, do you feel it meets all the, with a little room to spare?
Yeah, so from our experience, again, we, we push back a little bit on, on, on a couple of the assumptions, and we're comfortable with where we're at now relative to the size of the basin. So, I think it's about the size it should be. Now, if you wanna go, here's another question about the eight and a half, too. The, they, when you do an analysis, you do the same storm for the existing condition as the, as the, you know, after condition.
Right, so the runoff, and that calculation's pretty high to start with.
Right, so you're gonna have, yeah, so the, the difference is gonna be, I, I don't think we need to go through that effort again. It's, it's not like, you know, you're feeding a dam down, you know, below, and there's, you know.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Did you get your question? I wanna make sure you get your question.
So, I, I'm not sure I have my question answered. I just wanna know what, what we do if this doesn't solve the problem. I also have the question, what are the other contributors? I know we're kinda running over time. What are the other contributors to this problem that are obvious problems on Wilson Street?
All right, so we, we have the runoff situation on, on Roy's property. We also have the pavement issue on Roy's property, which he said he was gonna address at the same time. So, that, that addresses, once we get those two, which I think the, the plan here would, would meet those two. Then we have the, the issue of the road itself. The road, Wilson Street is a very old road.
Yep.
It's, it's rutted now, it's, you know, so flow actually goes in where the wheel ruts are, as opposed to the gutter, and so it doesn't get to the, to the, to the basins, and then therefore runoff. So, so that's a, that's a situation where, you know, it, it's just a process, you gotta redo the drainage and the road, you know, which is, which is, you know.
Are there other contributors that you can think of? So, we know you're not gonna fix the road, we know that.
I mean, that, that's, you know, obviously, if you could put a canopy over it all and prevent the rain from falling, that'd be great.
Hold on one second, okay? I was super patient.
And I actually, it was on deck.
Yep, I, I hear ya. So, I really wanted to know honestly, if there was a, if there was anybody else we should be talking to. But it really is the DPW, the road, and the road, the, the new road.
Yep.
Which, by the way, I just wanna make the point that the town did build, but that also benefited you greatly.
No, no, we don't think so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're, we're all aware of how this game was played. Go ahead.
So, to your point about how do we measure success, I think it's basically just monitoring the next year. I just wanted to throw that in there. That was not really what I wanted to say. What I did wanna say was, we're all agreeing that this is a good thing to do. I mean, maybe we should be doing more, but I'd like to move to vote on what we have in front of us and approve this and get it moving forward. And then if we could, you know, this is not a finalized thing, right? This is, we could find more solutions down the road, but we don't need to solve everything tonight. This will be, in my opinion, this will be the first step.
Okay, Deb, did you have any last thoughts?
Yeah, I just have one last thought, just one question on this drawing. Our page 100, let me see if I can reduce it, figure two, where it shows Legacy Farms Road, and it shows the dashed arrow going across it and down, down this one side. And then it shows a, planning to cross the road and the grade of the road. And one of my concerns is that, so, is that half the wa, was in the calculations, is that half the water crossing Legacy Farms Road and going to AP? Or is it a quarter of the water crossing the road? See, so, so we still have just.
The whole road is pitched in one direction.
So, it's, so, but it's got only one exit spot. It's, it's got one spot that it's crossing over.
But no, the whole road, it sheet flows across the road into a swell.
Right, but the swells, so what's happening is the swell comes down the side, the swell comes down the side. So, it's coming down from this whole side of the road into the swell, I understand that. But what's happening is it's surfacing and crossing the road.
No, the swell's on the same side as the, the basin.
There's a culvert there.
If, if you're actually.
There's a culvert there.
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm, it's not shown there. Okay, so.
And DPW has looked at this plan?
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're on board? Do you know, Phil?
I don't know.
We haven't discussed this with them, we wanted to come to you.
I'm sorry, say it again.
This was not discussed with DPW. This, DPW, I think, kinda looks at this as onsite, and the work in the street is offsite.
And has DPW cleaned out the basins that we talked about?
I don't know.
So, I know.
That's what they emailed.
Hold on.
Sorry. I had emailed John, and he wrote back that DPW will continue to clean out and monitor the existing infrastructure. I'm not sure if that means it did happen.
Yeah, can you just ask him? We, we had the question, thank you, Mary, for bringing up the minutes from the last time, that we specifically had a commitment for the next 10 days to do that work, and if it was done in that time?
Yeah.
And just, I mean, if we're, you know, if we're in a next iteration, they did clean it out, and we're, we're waiting, then.
To add on to that, if we're gonna be contacting DPW, can we just ask them if they can do anything with the, the side of the road? Or if they have any plans to improve the road at all? I mean, if we're.
So, John spoke to that at our last meeting, as far as improving the road, and that is not necessarily in the works, but they understand the issues with it.
But if we keep asking them.
Yeah, well, you know, we can.
Right. Squeaky wheel, maybe.
The, the other thing DPW needs to do, when they clean those catch basins out, the outflow pipe from the last basin is blocked. So, that needs to be exposed, otherwise the basin's just gonna fill up and flow out to the street.
If we can just, like, keep the lines of communication open and make sure he knows what we talked about here, and whatever his department can do to help us out on that end would be amazing.
No pressure, Georgia, just come and fix the road, okay?
And Dave would really like if you would come regrade that road. Yes.
Madam Chairman, from Beta's perspective, Phil, are all the outstanding issues resolved? There's a couple here that say the issue remains outstanding.
Those were sent today.
Yeah, so we have a new letter today. We, they, they provide additional calculations to show that.
Since that everything's resolved, and, and Beta and Phil feel pretty comfortable, very comfortable, in signing off on this, which they hadn't done previously.
And now, now it is gonna be you, that we can come back to.
And I think there are those three areas, right? So, we talked about before, and I know this, 'cause I run this road, and the issue, I feel, isn't necessarily a one-time storm where you get a ton. It's the drip, drip, drip that happens in February, March, and April, where it freezes, unfreezes, and that, and that's the issue to me.
We, we agree with that.
Yeah, and if, I think if this plan addresses that, we're gonna go a long way to, I think, hopefully solving the issues on Wilson Street.
I, I appreciate the work that has gone into this.
We may even decide to make it 10% bigger while we're out there. I don't wanna come back again.
I know you don't wanna come back again. It is possible that we have to, if, if we don't get our way to.
What I'm saying is, if anything, we're gonna probably make it slightly larger than the plan. I think, Phil, you're okay with that, right? So, if anything, we're gonna make it slightly larger, rather than going right to the edge of it. By the way, these plans that say not for construction, they always say that till you're done with the plans. Now, if we vote this this evening, and we're done with the plans, we will have them finish that plan, so it is for construction.
Okay. All right.
And maybe I suggest an as-built?
Yeah, we're fine with that.
To get an as-built, yeah.
Just to make sure we get the volume that we expected.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
I was just gonna, Beta had mentioned one thing that we might add as a condition. The detail of the overwall, overflow stone swell should include a barrier to prevent flow through the stone below elevation 422.
I think they got that today.
Right, that's today, yeah.
The modification to the drawings that would show proper culvert crossing the road underneath, for, for the swell on the far side. It's missing, it's missing a culvert.
It's on the same side of the road?
It's on the opposite side as AP.
It's just dotted line, as opposed to.
Oh, it's already in, it's, it's existing already. It's not.
It's there.
It's not, it's not proposed. This is the only proposed part, right there.
So, the water, so that swell is existing.
Yep.
And the water that's coming down that swell is gonna go through a culvert.
Which is extensive.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I didn't know that. Thank you.
But for clarity on the VHB.
Right, it should show, it should show it.
All right, we are way past time. You get, I'll entertain one more comment, Katie, really quickly, though. Come forward.
So, the catch basin, Katie Towler, Nine Kruger Road, so the catch basin that is, is at the end of Legacy Farms Road, that is not part of this redesign at all. They didn't change anything with that. It's, it's, it's there, and it, there's nothing being done to it. That, that catch basin has never drained. I've taken pictures of it, like, every time I'm there, several times over the summer. It wasn't empty yesterday, after, you know, at more than 72 hours of time where it should've drained. It was not drained. The, they're supposed to drain, and if they don't drain, it means they're not working. So, that catch basin is not working. It's never worked, and I guess we shouldn't be surprised, since it wasn't engineered, right? And it's, it's.
Is that, is that, I'm sorry, is that the town's responsibility? So, we talked about some of the, the problems that we wanna follow up with, to make sure the town is maintaining the basins.
They're right next to each other, the, the existing one, and then the one, we said that, that the complaint was that neither of them was working, right? They're both in the same type of soil, they're both were constructed in the same design. They both don't work. So. So, um, this redesign is, is, is fixing one of them, but the other ones still doesn't work.
Are we talking about the catch basin or are we talking about the retention pond?
It's the catch, uh, I-
Catch basins are the drains by the side of the road.
It's the thing at the end of the road with the rocks around it, with the water and-
Still agreed that's the town's.
If you're talking about the basin itself, that's what we're expanding significantly in size.
You're not changing the one on the corner, you're changing the one on Wilson Street.
The one on the corner flows into the one that overflows.
Right, but the one on the corner doesn't drain.
It's all connected, we're gonna take care of that at the same time.
It's not on the plans.
I understand that, that's the soil condition Phil and I looked at.
Okay.
And I still don't know where that twenty-six foot pipe, um, that new twenty-six foot pipe is, is, is going. Where, where does that outfall?
Okay. I'll ask that question for you, Katie. Where's the new pipe going?
I'm not aware of the pipe.
Oh, the, the outlet pipe for the basin?
Yep.
It's at the end of the basin there. It's, uh, it's designed to, uh, uh, meter the, the outflow from outside of the basin, so. So the basin controls the runoff so that it can get out of a smaller pipe.
Yep, okay.
So that, the flow analysis is down gradient of that pipe and the existing conditions and the proposed conditions.
So, for clarity-
Yep.
On this chart that we're looking at, on the right side is, is Wilson Street and it's heading, water's flowing north down the hill.
Yep.
And then it's just going to the next, to the next.
Right.
And it's staying on the Legacy Farm North property.
It, it'll flow out into Wilson Street?
Unless it'll be flowing off onto Wilson Street.
Right, the same amount that's under the existing conditions pre Legacy Farms Road.
Alright, how are we doing as a board? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
I did.
I'm sorry.
I did.
What did you say?
I made a motion to, to vote on what was proposed.
Alright, and to approve what's been proposed?
Correct.
And has anybody seconded it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
With the condition mentioned by Beta?
You can.
Okay. With Beta Three, the condition at the end, the document we received today.
Wanna tell us what it is?
Provided detail of the overflow stone swale that includes a barrier to prevent flow through stone below elevation four twenty-two.
That was provided after-
It is provided, it has been provided.
I, I'd also like to, um, ask them to, um, when they do do their drawings to make sure that they show that culvert, 'cause it's a little bit deceptive, it doesn't look like it's designed properly.
That's fine.
Anything else? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're gonna have to come back to you, I'm sorry about the, the bridge, the sidewalk.
You wanna make a maximum of the night?
Uh, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
That's fine, two weeks.
October first.
October first.
Thank you.
If you'll excuse me for one second, I'm just gonna go grab some water.
Okay. Um, and I will entertain a motion to, um, actually, we opened and continued, we don't. So we now are gonna get to our public hearing fifty-two and fifty-five Wilson Street if we can have the applicants come forward. Thank you for your patience, by the way.
Sorry, we wanted to continue that, or I missed that? We didn't close the hearing?
It does, it's not a hearing.
Okay, okay, so we don't need it, we don't need, okay.
That's the, that's-
Okay, I thought you just said we wanted to continue it, I'm like-
Oh, yes, we're gonna continue the discussion on what is a public hearing. And so we don't have to vote it, we did vote it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
This one you're talking about?
Yes, but the last one was not a public hearing.
Correct.
Yes.
Good.
Plenty of time where you're trying to figure out what we were doing.
Apparently, I met half of everybody going, going the other direction.
You know, when we start questioning procedures, we're getting tired.
Yeah, I know. Well, it's just, that one is a little different, I guess, and for the purposes of, you know, clarifying for the public, that's, we don't have a, we don't have an open public hearing in front of us for that particular work.
Right, right. Right, it's going on over the niceness of its heart.
Well, and because it needs to be done. Welcome, if you would take a minute to introduce yourselves to us, um, and then introduce your project.
Sure. My name is Tracy Adamski, I'm, uh, Vice President with Ty and Bond, and I've been managing, uh, the permitting process for the Hopkinton LNG liquefaction replacement facility project, for which we're here in front of you today.
My name is Jean Christie, I'm a project engineer with Ty and Bond.
And my name is Jim Blackburn, I am a project manager for Eversource's LNG Group.
Do you want to take out the ortho photo? I think we have one plan that you guys don't have. It's just an ortho photo to kinda give you a better sense of where we are and what we're proposing to do.
I think it's not the easel up, if, if you have an easel.
You do.
Does that-
You hold it, our chair.
Hold it, that'd be great.
Our chair.
Poor you brought Jim.
Best have an easel, right there.
I do, yes.
Jim volunteered.
That's why I didn't need the chair.
So, um, we're here today for the LNG facility that's located off of Wilson Street. It's, it, there's the east side of Wilson Street and the west side of Wilson Street. And what we're proposing to do is, uh, replace the existing liquefaction facility, which is on the east side of the street, in a new location on the west side of the street. So in that area, the, the work area is the area that's outlined in yellow on the plan, so it's just south of the existing LNG tanks. Um, there is a staging area that's located to the south, that'll be for construction staging, and then there will be some existing, uh, or some new pipes installed where the existing pipe racks are. So there'll be some limited, um, land disturbance in those locations on the east side of Wilson, but that's really all the work that's being proposed on the east side. Um, we do have three small wetland, or actually, I guess, four small wetland areas that are isolated wetlands subject to local Conservation Commission jurisdiction only, and we've been working with the Conservation Commission through that process as well.
So when are you before the Conservation Commission?
We've, uh, actually had, uh, two hearings and we were actually waiting to kind of wrap up our comments on Beta's review in order to finalize that process, but from a wetlands perspective, um, these wetlands are actually, uh, kind of interesting. They're upgradient of the majority of the work that we're doing. I think they were construct- or created by some of the previous land disturbance activities that occurred on site, and so they're kind of of marginal quality as well, and we're not touching the actual wetlands. So, you know, from that perspective, I think we've worked through the issues with the Conservation Commission, so we're just, wanna tie up both processes at the same time. Um, we, we have Beta's review comments because the stormwater is also part of the Conservation Commission's review, and we wanna make sure we have everybody's comments, we'll revise the plan set, and then anticipate being outside of the, or through the Conservation Commission on, in early Oc- October. Dates are escaping me, I think we're in front of them, October second. So, the applications that are in front of you today are for stormwater management as well as earth removal. Um, this project is going through Department of Public Utilities review, so that, um, review process kind of takes the place of site plan review, so that's why that's not part of the application process that's in front of you now. Um, so we're in front of you for the stormwater permit as well as earth removal. In general, the balance of earth removal activities will actually have a net in, um, input of materials coming into the site, but because there is rock here that we may not be able to find places for onsite, we wanted to make sure that that was covered as part of this permitting process.
So, uh, if you could, uh, for purposes of our edification and also for the public, if you could give us the synopsis of the DPU process and where that is? I can, I'm gonna have to switch the-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, Eversource filed a petition with the Department of Public Utilities approximately around July of two thousand and seventeen. Um, as part of that, we have to demonstrate the, uh, need for the project. We answered over, uh, two hundred and something, uh, two hundred and five or two hundred and fifteen questions for both the department and also the town of Hopkinton, who was the, um, single intervener in the, in the proceeding. So, both, the Department of Public Utilities had about a hundred questions, the town had about another hundred questions, of which had many subparts. So through the, uh, state's zoning exemption process, um, we covered things such as, uh, everything from impacts such as the visual aesthetics of the facility, uh, noise, uh, what our impacts were to, uh, wetlands, land, uh, tree clearing, all number, uh, facets of, uh, the project itself. We provided a lot of, uh, kinda preliminary drawings, uh, and as they, as the, as the exemption process continued through, obviously, design continued to be, uh, furthered, and so we were able to provide more detailed, uh, drawings and, and other documents as we got further along. So, um, right now, we are in the final stages of the proceeding, so the, I guess the docket closed, uh, back at the beginning of August when we had our public- where we had the hearings. Uh, where we held the three days of, of hearings where the town as an intervener, um, Eversource is the company, and then the Department of Public Utilities had, um, a, a three-day hearing to address specific questions and resolve any outstanding, um, items. So, um, since that, the proceedings essentially, I suppose, closed, and now the department is in its review period, uh, finalizing its review for a decision, um, sometime in the very near future.
Do you have a target date?
We do, um, actually, I believe we had initially September twentieth. I suspect we probably won't receive it, uh, here in September, but we'd expect prior to the end of the year, we would.
Before the end of the year, so from September to December?
Yes, uh, the department doesn't necessarily put a timeline to it. Now, we did initially receive a schedule very early in the proceeding, um, and so that schedule, if, uh, the dates were to hold true, would put a decision sometime in the month of September, so that's what our estimate's based on.
Can I just ask a process question? Um, why do you come before us before the DPU decision is, uh, resolved and decided and complete?
The DPU's decision is specific to zoning, which we don't feel that what we're here to present today is related to the zoning implications of the project. I believe we're specifically here for the, the stormwater implications and then the earth removal permit. Of course, neither of those things have any bearing if the zoning exemption was to be decla- denied. The project wouldn't be able to go forward.
Uh, just to defer my own self speaking, it's difficult for, and I'm a, a big fan of the public being able to impact the process, and this is a complicated process, so I, I feel like it, it does complicate it more for the public, it's just my personal opinion.
Can you just elaborate, I wasn't following you completely there.
Uh, so there's a, a process before DPU, a more global process, and my question was, is why are we doing the smaller pieces? So if we do this, um, the earth, earth, um, and the stormwater management, and they get denied?
Yeah.
It's all for naught.
All in void, okay.
Right, but-
So just about the timing you're concerned about?
Yeah, more than that, though, it's, uh, the public's ability to impact this very big, very complicated process, that it's meaningful to me to make it as clear as possible, so that's why I really was asking the question. Did you have anything else you wanted to say initially as you, um, present this, or?
Well, do you want us to get into details regarding the stormwater management system?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. Um, so looking at the plan that is, um, on the monitors above us-
It's also above, just so you know, so I'm, I'm not not looking at it.
If you want me to go to a certain plan, just-
I think we can probably stick with this one for, for a little bit. The project itself has been, is a pretty compact design in order to manage how much materials we are using to fuel different sources of, of the facility. The shading, the dark shading on the plan that you see is what we're proposing as impervious surfaces. We also have some buildings, and we have equipment pads, and in between those features is going to be a stone or gravel-y surface, um, the goal of which is to avoid grass growing within the facility itself. Outside of the facility, out of sight of that secure fence limit, any, any disturbed areas would become grass. So in terms of stormwater management, we have proposed a rather traditional system, which includes catch basins, manholes, and an infiltration basin. Prior to discharge to the infiltration basin, which is located to the west of your screen, just south of the westernmost tank. Before discharging to that basin, we have designed water quality units to remove, you know, the necessary TSS loading, among other things. Um, the eastern portion of, let's see if I can make it this quick, the eastern portion of the western half of the project, so the, the eastern side, right along, um, Wilson Street, is, currently has paved access, paved driveways, paved loading areas. While we do have an increase in impervious area in that area, a lot of it is redevelopment. There's some existing drainage infrastructure within that eastern side of this, you know, the, the prop- project proper, I guess you could say, that we intend to retain. Some of the runoff from the, this facility will drain to the impoundment area to the north of this. That is, you know, it's not quite shown on this plan itself, I don't know if it's, how much it's shown on other plans, but, um, it is located to the north and it's, you know, that's designed for impoundment of the natural gas should an event happen. So it's not designed for stormwater, but that's where wa- stormwater goes.
Share that with me again, the, what's, the impoundment area is for a spill?
It's for the tanks, yes.
Okay, so it, I'm sorry, I was thinking stormwater, so tell me where that is and what that is.
That's it. It's this area right in here.
Okay.
So to the north of the tanks, and just because it's the low point on the site, it does receive stormwater. Water from that impoundment area is pumped manually, um, by Eversource as needed, just to drain it so that there is that capacity should it, the need ever arise.
Where is that pumped by Eversource?
Uh, I think it's at the northern part of- Yeah, I think it's right up here. All of this drains northerly, there's a, there's a berm that is created around the outside.
Yeah, so it's, it's been pumped from this side of the berm, just the other side of it, and then I think you'll see on Rafferty Road, on the south side of Rafferty Road, it tends to flow down that swell.
Yeah, there's a swell down there.
Natural swell. When you say manually pumped, does that mean you're hitting a switch manually or you're? Yes. But it's, it's-
Electric pump, but manually operated.
Some pump.
Right. Okay. So that's the, you know, general overview of the stormwater management system. Um, you know, we try to keep as much development as close together so that we're not disturbing of the wooded vegetation to the south of the project area, and to try to retain those existing drainage areas, or at least the patterns. So are there any specific questions? I don't know how much you wanna know.
Can I ask a general question which really has nothing to do with the earth removal or stormwater? Why are you moving from one side of the street to the other? And what is gonna happen to this site that you're currently on?
So, the existing liquefaction equipment is this area here, which you can see is really congested. The use of the facility, so we have about three hundred thousand customers that are pounding on the facility during the winter. So what we do is during the summer, we liquefy, um, we take gas off the pipelines, we chill it down to negative two hundred and sixty degrees Fahrenheit, it turns into a liquid. We send that liquid across the street and we store it in these three tanks. Those three tanks during the winter now become your stored energy supply for the twelve coldest days of the year. So what we'll do is we'll draw from those tanks on days when natural gas prices are, say, instead of during the summer, four dollars, approximately a hundred dollars is past winter, is past January. And so what that does for Eversource is that allows us to ensure that our natural gas customers are not having to pay a hundred dollars per firm for a natural gas business that are about eight dollars. So it gives us the ability to kinda stabilize the price to the natural gas customers. So that's the importance of this facility. Now, we liquefy for approximately, uh, probably about two hundred days to fill these tanks during the summer. During the winter, we could only run at our full capacity for about, uh, twelve days, I believe it is. So it's, it's a very small amount of capacity, but it's used on days when it makes- So it's a very small amount of capacity, but it's used on days when it makes the most impact. So we may flow a little bit at a reduced capacity a certain time of the year, just to kind of suppress those prices, but in general, about 12 days a year, it's used. Now, the reason we can't do the work that we have over in this area is because this construction project is about 16 months worth of construction. We cannot afford to lose a season with a liquefaction, we would be unable to, or it would be impractical to fill these with trucks from other facilities. So in order to do this, we had looked at some scenarios of trying to replace the equipment right in its existing location, and it just practically didn't make, did not work. So what we did is we took another area of the facility, which is over here, and I know it's been some time since I've been in front of this board, and some of the members have probably changed, but when we initially started to kind of propose this project, what we found was with all the development up here with Legacy Farms, it made a lot of sense to take the equipment that we run the majority of the season, or the majority of the year, and move into a much more secluded area of the site. So what we're doing is we're moving away from your larger development, over to a relatively secluded section of the site, which is bounded by both our property, Department of Conservation and Recreation, and then Wood Realty Trust. And then also, a lot of this over here is all actually de-restricted access, so EverSource has bought rights to some of that land that's owned by Legacy Farms in order to restrict any development. So what we've tried to do is build a buffer around our facility to kind of limit, limit the, I guess, perception of any neighbors to the facility. Sorry.
You want to go?
Yeah.
To the chair. Will you also be moving the noise associated with that equipment? Which, because that, so that's what you hear when you walk to the trails over on Legacy North. Would that be moving over the south side as well?
Yes. So currently, the existing exemptions for the facility limit the noise at the property line, so about 55 decibels, which is really the federal standard. Our facility, the newer section of the facility will be, is much more stringent, so we had to limit the sound produced from the new equipment to 10 decibels above the existing lowest measured condition. So we went out here and measured noise, which was about 32 decibels on the coldest, quietest night of the year, which was in about the month of February. That means that our modeling and our equipment's designed not to exceed about 42 decibels at the property line, so significantly quieter than over in this location, and about 1,500 feet from any of the development over here. So we felt that while we are impacting a small area of the property, it's about six acres or so that we're impacting over here. It is previously disturbed, but by moving that equipment over here, we felt that we had, we probably are improvement to the overall condition of the facility and the noise or perception from the new development.
So what are you going to do with the property on the east side when this is all done?
So there is still existing equipment over here that will have to be maintained, so our control homes on this side of the facility, our vaporization equipment is on this side of the facility, and our high-pressure send-out pumps. Now, those two pieces of equipment only operate again for about the 12 days a year that we run the facility for vaporization. So we'll go from an operation that typically runs 200-plus days a year, down to about 12 days a year of mechanical equipment running over here. There's also a process called boil-off gas compression, which there's several engines in this building here, which takes gas off of the tanks throughout the day, presses it, and puts it out into our distribution system. Now, that's because the tank always has some vaporization within it naturally, so we have to do something with those vapors.
That's the burn-off we see up top, right?
It's not, actually. I can talk to that, too. So that is, these tanks, because it's negative 260 degrees Fahrenheit, as any heat leaks into them, you always get a little bit of boiling of the liquid, so we have to dispose of that because these tanks operate at atmospheric pressure. We can't let them build pressure. So we have to take that, and instead of burning it, what we do is we put it out into the distribution system, and customers use it for gas. That's a 24-hour day, seven days a week, operation throughout the year. Those engines, which would have to run throughout the year just for that, which again produces noise, will now be moved over to this side of the facility where we'll be doing two things. One, it's an enclosed building, that'll be insulated, it's sounding terrible. Also, two of the compressors will be electric-driven, so we'll go from having to run two, we'll go from running several very large engines throughout the year for compression, to really two electric engines in the majority of the year. And then we'll have two standby units, which are gas-fired engines, and those will run at a reduced period of time. So that helps us both with our missions, so we'll be cutting down significantly on air emissions from the facility, but it also reduces noise because now we're not running a combustion engine and a compressor at the same time. So there's also a benefit throughout the year just from the movement of that equipment. Regarding the flare, we'll still maintain the two flares that are up here, and obviously, if you've ever seen them going off, they are a sight. The difference is currently those operate when the facility is liquefying, so again, that 200 days a year that we liquefy. We have some components of the natural gas, which are called heavies, which are things like, natural gas is methane, so it'd be like hexane, ethane, some of the heavier hydrocarbons. Those have to get disposed of, and instead of trucking them off-site, currently, they're burned. Now, we do have some microturbines where we can burn them into electrical energy, so we do limit some of that now. We've implemented those about 10 years ago. The new facility, however, we use those as our fuel source and our new compressor, so we actually eliminate flaring those 200 days a year. And what happens is our three flares now become emergency use only, and so they're only for upset conditions. So if we had an event where a valve closed too quickly because of some process condition, that, we typically do not vent to atmosphere, whereas other facilities would vent their release right to atmosphere. We burn that off so that we don't create some type of unsafe condition with the gasket pool. So those three flares, because there is a new flare associated with this, it's much smaller than the one up across the street, but those three flares will only operate during those emergency conditions, so we'll go to several hours per year compared to the days that it's running during liquefaction currently.
So how many flares on each side? Sorry?
There's currently two over here.
And then one new one?
And there'll be one over here.
Thank you.
So this one over here is about 40-foot tall, and I think you've got a 60 and a 150-foot flare. Those will remain, but not, they won't be as you see now during the summer with a flame from the top of them. And this is at a much lower elevation, so that's kind of another point is where visually you can see these from kind of the surrounding area. This one here is much lower, so not only is the elevation much lower, but the flare itself is a lot shorter. Just because you've cut me off there a little bit.
Yeah, Frank, you should have paid more attention in chemistry class.
The other thing is when we run, right, that 200 days a year, we're taking LNG that we're producing here, and we're sending it over to the tanks over here. During the winter, then, the 12 days, it's again crossing that road. So again, by locating now the equipment on this side of the road, we're not having to cross the road the majority of the year with LNG. So the LNG is now flowing from this new location directly into the tanks. So while we don't feel that there's an issue with the road crossing and the LNG crossing, it does address some of those issues that have been brought up previously by other members of the community.
Point of clarification?
Yeah.
You mentioned that there were several hours of emergency. Is that typical of a...
Yeah, so I say emergency, it could be, I know there was an event last summer where we had a fuse that burnt out on the transmitter, which is, indicates pressure for us. That caused the system to shut down, the system had to vent somewhere, that vented, now that vented to atmosphere and was quite loud and created some community feedback. That would be considered...
Community feedback. I like that. Yes.
That would be considered emergency. Now, the reality is we didn't have it in safe condition, the plant operators have to, exactly as it should.
As it's designed.
Some of the other hours of operation that that may get used would be like during the startup or the shutdown, beginning and the end of the season, you need to, beneath the natural gas that's in the lines, so we would send that to the flare, so you burn that off in the schools of it.
One more question along those lines. When it does vent to atmosphere, what does that mean chemically?
You release methane to the atmosphere, and then it would just disperse, just like any, I guess, natural gas that figured out.
So we're not actually to questions and answers until we've heard your whole presentation and then Beta?
I am done.
I appreciate you said whether.
I should say thank you. Jim always does a great job.
Jim, thank you.
I've been living for the last year, so I apologize, I kind of get a little passionate with it. It is, we do feel like...
No, it's very exciting.
We do feel like we did a lot of the, you know, we tried to do as much as we could to do the right thing. I think the location of the plant is kind of tucked away in the trees, we tried purposely to do that, so we did, we believe the impacts were really...
Can I just ask globally another question? I just told everybody we weren't to questions, so I apologize in advance for my actions. Are you, are you, as a, as a company, moving to fur, you know, sort of move away from that whole...
This side over here?
Side?
I would say no, because we do own that property, it is already impacted, so we will leave some of the existing operation over there. Again, it's a little bit more limited use than after we move the liqueifier over.
I think you redid the whole parking, sorry, redid the whole parking lot on that side too, right?
We did, and we have a lot of other investments that took place over here. We replaced the vaporizers a couple of years ago, which again was our, you know, kind of the more significant piece of equipment for us, as we depend 100% on that during the winter to supply that gas. So we have put quite a bit of investment on this side of the facility, so I won't say we're abandoning that at all. We do see value in moving as much of the operation and consolidating operation, at least from a seasonal perspective, where we operate during the summer over here, and we operate during the winter over here, and try to, you know, limit heat operations and other folks going back and forth across that street. In an ideal world, this would have all been on one single site that wasn't bisected by a town, a street.
Nifty little scene of growth. Okay, thank you. We should hear from Beta, but then we also, and whoever's here from the public, at least briefly. I know we're over time, and then agree to when we'll see you again.
So I'm going to have Gillian Bocoff, she did a lot of the review of this project.
Okay, thank you.
And she can summarize our findings.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Bocoff, I'm with Beta, and I worked with Phil reviewing this project. In general, Beta didn't find a lot of issues when we were reviewing this project. The project does propose an increase of impervious cover of approximately four acres. The site has a wide range of soil types, so our comments were sort of more geared around infiltration. One of the things we were looking for clarification first of all was on the limits of proposed curb and surface materials, so that we could better assess the runoff. Another thing we were looking for is some clarification on soil data, specifically the test pit data that we reviewed were borings conducted in non-seasonal, high groundwater months, so we were looking for some more information there. And lastly, we were looking for some more information on the earth removal, looking for an estimated volume of removals, so we could better understand the impacts specifically to traffic in the area.
Is that it? Because we're running, is there any members of the public who wanted to make sure they spoke? Yep, go ahead.
Katie Towner, Nine Kruger Road. So I wanted to make a comment about the increase in the water going to the outfall on that area that goes across the street. As I understand, the stormwater standards, they're not supposed to increase what they put off the site, they're supposed to break even. So there is an increase, and where it's going is it goes, it goes across Legacy Farms Road, under the road, and then it goes to a stream, which does not go, does not go down Legacy Farm roads, it goes, the stream goes all the way through the woods to my property line. So the stream flows from, from, from their property, under the road, all the way through the woods, and it goes between my property, Nine Kruger Road, and the house next to me, Seven Kruger Road. Okay? That stream runs pretty hard, it runs all the way down into the, into the reservoir. It runs pretty much at capacity. So when I read the stormwater report, and it said that, it said that no, no effort was made to, to not increase the flow because there was no impact, because it was just going to a low-lying area, and there was no impact. So I would say that this is another case where we're not, you know, we're not doing adequate engineering, because, because that stream does go to my house, and I know the water goes to my house, because when they pump out their, when they have their fire training exercises and they fill their basin with foam, and they pump it out, it comes right down to my house. So, you know, I've seen that, I've taken pictures of it. I don't know what's in that foam, you know, I assume it's training foam, that it's non-toxic, but I don't know that. When I have seen it billowing in the stream behind my house, I have called the, the company, and people have come out and looked at it, saying, "Oh, yeah, that's us." So, so, you know, they know the water goes there, I know the water goes there, and I would like an analysis as to, you know, it, I read the stormwater standards, and it, and it says that you're supposed to, you're supposed to figure out what the downstream impact is. So at, you know, two cubic feet per second, you know, what is that, what is that going to mean if they've increased that? What's that going to mean for that stream? That stream is already running at capacity, is it gonna, is it gonna flood, flood my land or whatever, or, I guess, create erosion, which will, you know, destroy the, the wetlands next to it or whatever? But it, it just, I think there ought to be an analysis for, for where it's actually going. And I will, I will try to dig up those pictures of the, you know, I, very interested in what they said about, they, they actually pumped the water out of this basin into the stream that goes behind my house, and so I guess it must have been an act of act to actually pump the foam out, too. So, you know, I guess, I guess that's, I don't think they're supposed to do that. I think, I think if they have an actual fire, obviously, they're allowed to, you know, the firefighting foam is an exemption, but for training exercises, I don't, you know, I, I don't think they're supposed to be pumping the foam out of there.
Before we figure out when we're going to meet next, can I ask the fire chief to give us any thoughts that he has?
I would just say I'm available for questions at this point, so, yeah.
Okay.
We would like permission to work with the engineer directly.
Yep.
There's a number of minor, well, minor, not so minor, issues we need to work with, just really technical things.
Okay.
To the chair, have you seen the response yet? This just came today.
Yeah, we looked over them briefly, so, I mean, there's some discussion, yep.
Okay. Let me just ask for clarity. What we need to continue and change the, or get agreement on a changing of the decision date?
Yes, so the stormwater management permit, the decision is due on September 25th, and the earth removal, the decision is due November 1st. And while I'm on it, I could tell you our lineup for the next hearing.
Yep.
So 7:45, we have Wilson Street Solar, we have that for an hour. 8:45, we have Whisper Way. 9:30, we have the second permit for the LNG facility, which is not opened yet, and that's for the secondary access road.
What, that's not, say the time again?
9:30.
9:30 for that access road, okay.
And then October 15th, 7:45, we have one public hearing, which is a parking special permit.
It's a what?
Parking special permit.
Parking special permit?
Eighteenth Theater Street.
They, that Eighteenth Theater Street is before the Board of Appeals right now, is that right? And what's their schedule, do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
They started the hearing on September 12th, and it was, it was continued without discussion until... They started the hearing on September 12th and it was, it was continued without discussion until September 26th.
So, they haven't even really started it? Okay. Okay. So, it doesn't really feel like there's time on the, on October 1st. Does that make sense? So, are you folks back also? Is it the same team for the access road? Yeah.
We, we are close to giving our comments for the access road.
Was that on the 29th? Is that what it is?
The access road starts at 9:30 on October 1st.
On October 1st.
Yeah. I guess what I would recommend, I'm tossing it up for consideration, is that we save, we continue this to the 15th and we save time when we meet on the 1st, should the access road need to be continued for, as well, so that we, we get you guys somehow together, depending on how this goes. Does that sound reasonable? All right, how much time do you think we should do for the Cedar Street on the 15th?
It's hard to tell because I'd, hmm, 25 minutes?
Okay. All right, let's, I mean, we'll just, let's at least do a half hour. And then 8:15 for this, the earth removal and the stormwater. And stormwater. And then at. Next meeting, we need to just try and remember to save.
Some space for.
Some space, maybe at 9 for the access road. So, we get you guys together if the continuations are happening. Okay.
Pencil it in, right?
We're penciling that in, yes. Yeah. Yeah. To 9:30, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let's hope, right? So, that would sort of leave us with room for one more potential thing in the month of October. In the month of October, we can take on one more piece of business, so. All right.
And then for the decision deadline for stormwater management, sorry, I forgot what I had said. What was that?
You said 9:25 is the current.
Yes, so if we could continue that to, we are meeting on the 15th. I would say a week after that.
Okay, so the 22nd, is that amenable, the 22nd is the new decision date?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion. First of all, we agree that the engineers can work together and talk. And that we are continuing, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to October 15th at 8:15. And the decision on the stormwater management plan continue, extended to a deadline of 10:22. I don't think the earth removal has to be extended. That deadline is 11:01. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So, move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much. All right. Yes, unless somebody would like to move the minutes. Oh, no. We continue to. Yes.
I'd like to move the minutes with one typo.
Oh, no. What?
Colby.
It's really, really minor. I'll show you where it is later. Everything else was good with me.
You read them thoroughly.
I did.
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That's a lot of trust, Carol, because you've just, you've got carte blanche to whatever that typo is.
Yeah.
It's minor.
All right. Did we have anything else that we didn't really get back to the scenic roads? We should carve out some time for that. Amy wants to carve out some time for.
The planning board website. I did meet with Josh Rosetti at Town Hall, mostly about the historic district website, but I was also able to ask my same questions about the planning board site. So, I have.
I see that we all have a tab for bios and we're all empty. Sort of a select, nobody put their bios in.
And you can send your photo. He'll put your photo on.
You can.
I have sent my biographical information. It never makes it in. Just letting you know.
The Board of Appeals has my photo.
Do you want to do that miscellaneous business?
And we should talk about Zach.
Yes.
And there was one more thing I was thinking that we should.
Center School.
The what? Was there?
Center School.
No, it's at Center School.
Oh, Center School. So, I'm not sure when we're going to do that, I guess, as I'm looking at this. Unless anybody has any appetite for a meeting at 7, from 7:00 to 7:30 on either of the October meeting, which I think would, especially for, oh, we're also inviting the folks back from Pond Street. So, we do need to have a process in place.
I'm wondering, since we have three meetings in October, if we should just.
Do we have three meetings in October?
Amenable to 7 if we can get done earlier? Because it is, it's getting, it's pretty late.
Question is, will we have to finish earlier or just be here longer?
Well, that's the thing. If we're just going to be here longer and stick with 7:30.
Yeah, we need a process in the meantime, though, too, yes. What's our third meeting in October?
That's October 29th.
Well, that is just an unhappy situation for me to come to terms with late in the game here. You guys are all way ahead of me on that. Okay.
1:15, 29.
Really? No 22nd? What? No 22nd? I thought the 22nd was one of the dates.
So, when do we want to talk about those three things? Just, I'm just asking the board. Do you want to wait until the 29th? So, the 15th is.
July's good.
Well, how about we save that time for the, for 9:30 on the 15th? Okay, so that is business. That'll be Zach. And website and walls. But we do have to see the gentleman about the wall earlier than that.
One question on the wall. I mean, is it, might it be appropriate for him to respond in writing if we have some specific questions to ask him? Maybe that's better in person.
Yeah, I would be hurt to correspond.
So, how about, so we, why don't we ask him if he can come at 7:30 on the 1st and at least have a conversation? Because our first public here, the hearing is 7:45.
That's a capital idea.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.